All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order.
Yes, sir.
Rule call.
Councilmember Mersch.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Black. Mayor Protem Derringer.
Here.
And Mayor Piper.
Here. And then we're gonna do the pledge allegiance and Charlie Willis is gonna lead us.
If you stand with your right hand over your heart, ready for the.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charlie.
Good job, Charlie. No, yeah, it's just gonna be longer. Presentations and nothing, approval of the order of agenda?
Move the order of agenda. Very.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we approve the item in the blue newsletter, I mean, the blue folder?
The blue.
Items in the newsletter as you'd like. There's two items for the blue folder tonight, one is for 13A and the other is for item 14.
You need to approve.
Second.
Receiving file.
Receiving file.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any public comment on anything that's not on the agenda?
She's all the way down from the lobby, I think she had something, but maybe not.
I don't see her anywhere.
Okay, moving on, hearing none, consent calendar?
Can I say what she was gonna ask?
To hear that, come on up.
Judith Haynell, Eastfield Drive, what she brought up to me today that she was maybe gonna ask about today was if there's any update, maybe you guys are not, maybe it's the association, the house on Eastfield, any progress?
There is progress. House on Eastfield, is there a short version of where we're at?
I talked about it during the code enforcement component.
Okay, hey, well, she'll bring it up later. She'll talk about it during our code enforcement part. Thank you. Anyone else have any comments that aren't on agenda?
What's that, set calendar?
Set calendar?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're gonna go to commission items. 10A zoning case number 24-074, site plan review for the construction grading of a stable access, walls exceeding the height of three feet and 2.5 feet average, up to a maximum of five feet, and other improvements, conditions using permits for a recreational game court, stable with a loft larger than 200 square feet, corral greater than 550 square feet, and a variance for construction in the front and rear yard setbacks, site distribution of more than 40%, non-exempt grading export deviation from the condition for the condition use permit from the Rolling Hills Municipal Code, and it's exempt from CEQA.
Good evening, Mayor Piper, members of City Council. This evening presenting these items under the Planning Commission Public Hearings, we have Ms. Lisa Edwards. Lisa is our principal planner, who is a contract through Willdan, and she will be presenting both items this evening, thank you.
Thank you for the evening, Council. We have here, according to the project is located at Two Possum Ridge, is it amplified?
This is just.
The project's located at Two Possum Ridge Road, at the intersection of Crest and Possum Ridge Road, at the northwest corner, and is within the RAS 2 zone. Thirty-four residents that fall within 1,000 feet of the property were notified of the Planning Commission Public Hearing on December 17th, 2024. The property is irregular in shape and is unique in that it straddles Possum Ridge Road. It has a steep slope at the northwestern portion of the parcel and. Oh, the eastern portion of the parcel. The property itself's generally below the grade of both Crest Road and Possum Ridge Road. The house associated with the previously proposed development at the April 16th meeting were variances which related to the sighting of the addition pool and originally proposed location of the tennis court. However, the conditional use permits for the various uses were removed from the project scope prior to that meeting and heard at a subsequent commission meeting. Shown here is the approved site plan for Phase 1. To sum up the results of the approved improvements to date, under resolution 23-150, that was adopted on April 16th, the project was approved for a 2,570 square foot addition that resulted in a 6,230 square foot residence, a new basement, and a new attached garage along with a pool, outdoor kitchen, fire pit, let's see, driveway improvements, and landscaping. At the December 17th meeting, the applicant proposed a revised scope of work to include a site plan review for a new tennis court, new stables, stable access, corral set aside, increased grading quantities, new walls greater than three feet, landscaping, and other improvements. Let's see. Not sure that's syncing up right, let me see here.
It's not advancing?
It's kind of not synced with my notes. So here, the building pad is shown in green, and building pad 2 is shown in purple. The requests are for conditional use permits for a stable over 200 square feet, a corral over 550 square feet, and a tennis court. This also requires variances for encroachment into the front and rear yard setbacks for the stable, site disturbance of more than 40%, and one-foot height deviation for the allowed retaining walls for the tennis court. Shown here is an overview of the new structures and corral area being proposed as part of the Phase 2 construction. In this exhibit, you can see where the encroachment into the front and rear yard setbacks occur for the stable and the corral. Because of these encroachments into the setbacks, the applicant's requesting a variance. Previously, the earthwork quantities for the project yielded an exempt amount of export totaling 68 cubic yards. As currently proposed, the project's requiring 1,252 cubic yards of non-exempt export, which also requires a variance. Presently, the western portion of the site's already disturbed and developed, however, more extensive grading's needed for the tennis court and the stable areas. In total, Phase 2 includes 3,453 cubic yards and 2,201 cubic, that was the cut, and 2,201 cubic yards of fill, for a total of 5,654 cubic yards, which leaves the site unbalanced. The amount of cut and export is justified, given the extra effort to reduce visibility of these structures as much as possible. The project needs to be disturbed an additional 26,300 square feet since the latest improvements from Phase 1, bringing that total to 73,800 square feet, which is 48.56% of the lot, and therefore exceeds the 40% land disturbance allowance. However, an exception in the code allows for up to 50% disturbance, provided that no more than 50% of the slopes resulting from the grading are steeper than 3:1. Since the tennis court area and barn area have 2:1 slopes, they're needed to make the land transition back into its natural grade, a variance is being requested because no more, or because more than 50% of the slopes will be steeper than 3:1. Variance is also being requested to exceed the allowable height for the tennis court retaining walls. The maximum retaining wall height for recreation courts is four feet. The proposed walls are an average of two and a half feet high, but they don't exceed five feet. And shown here's the location of the highest points of the retaining wall at five feet. It should be noted that since prior to the December meeting, the overall barn height was reduced by four feet and sunk in down two more feet to reduce the visual impact of the stable. A letter dated December 12th, 2024, from James and Ann Bellis expressed concerns about the number of CUP invariances being requested, as well as staff's cross-checks with various environmental agencies and whether stormwater or erosion plan check was performed. Staff believes that the number of the CUP's invariances requests are justified as the five-acre parcel has unique characteristics and it's irregular in shape, steep slopes, and limited buildable area. Staff also contacted the State's Fish and Wildlife Office and were given the criteria for projects subject to their review, which was determined that none of the criteria was met. At the last commission meeting on December 17th, the applicant reconsidered their option to place an ADU on the property rather than a guesthouse, and so the conditional use permit related to the guesthouse was removed from the Planning Commission approval. Additionally, the applicant requested to maximize screening of the tennis court by allowing proposed trees from the tennis court along Crest Road to exceed the roofline of the nearest project structure by four and a half feet. In response, the commission added a condition that directed staff to work with the applicant to adequately address all the landscaping and screening issues. The project's categorically exempt from CEQA under section 15303, and that relates to small facilities and structures. During the Planning Commission meeting in December, the commission opened the public hearing to public testimony and provided staff, and provided direction to staff and the applicant. At this time, staff recommends that City Council file and receive the adopted resolution 2024-14. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, anyone having questions?
I did, because when I looked at it, I had a few questions. So regarding the stable, on the uphill slope, I saw there was a lot of 2:1 grade. I understand it's downhill, it's a downslope. Why was that, is that to minimize the disturbed area? Because you have a great big area, a horse can walk around, it doesn't have to be 2:1.
I would.
Go ahead.
So I would say that because it is already a steep slope to keep the grade gradual, from a 2:1 to say to 3:1 slope, they would have to, it would, I wish the engineer was here to speak, but I can just speak generally of the idea of that. But it's to just kind of create a gradual slope rather than just have a cliff, so.
It's 2:1 more like a cliff than a 3:1.
But it's an existing situation.
So it's steep, if I can understand the 2:1 below the stable. I don't understand it above the stable going towards Crest.
I think I'll reserve that answer for our applicant who is present today.
And then my next question was, I can't remember the setback off of Crest Road. Is it like, it's a big setback?
Fifty foot.
So fifty foot plus another 35, then? So my next question was regarding the 2:1 in, they call it side yard setback, this time by the tennis court. Again, that's a pretty steep thing, it's steep there now, is that just to blend it in better? Why are you doing a 2:1?
I think that is what the current slogan is, but again, I'll have the applicant respond to that.
Because as you know, we don't like to go far on the tennis court problems, I don't mind the tennis courts. And lastly, I don't, so those are my questions, I understand some of the law. I don't know why we would do different landscape allowances, because. Why can't anything that could be a problem? Why did we have to do different landscape allowances?
Oh, meaning exceptions for, is it the type of landscaping or the height of the landscaping?
Height.
Of the height? That is something that we can look at, so the condition was added so that staff can work with the applicant on that, but if there is common or concern.
Okay, because just regarding the divided stable, the applicants here, we want it to look better, we don't want you to think that these are absolutes on like how much disturbed areas. If it looks better to have 3:1, you gotta go a little further, that's better than a 2:1 that looks like artificial, you see what I mean? And the same with the tennis court, but that was, that's my question, so I hear your line. Because some people think it's an absolute disturbed area thing, and we'd rather have it look better in the long term.
And Jim, if you remember on the slot, just to bring this part up, the property line is already about 35 feet down the hill, then you get the 35-feet setback.
Down the hill from?
The road.
From Crest.
The property line's not on Crest, that's one of those houses that the property line is like 30 feet from the road down the hill. So they start already 35 feet from the road, and then they go another 35 feet for the setbacks.
It's a really far, it's a tough.
So then, when you get there, and then you have a road on each side, which is another 50-foot easement and a whatever, so that's why you get that little teeny sliver. So if you can see, I don't know if you can blow that picture up. Okay, it's just.
I agree completely, I just want it to look good. I'm not saying I wouldn't approve a project, but I want it to, it doesn't look really artificial.
So, yeah, because when I'm looking, yeah, I'm totally with you, I'm fine, sorry. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I mean, do we have it from the plans exactly? Because I know the Rolling Hills Community Association has, on Crest at least, I think owns 50 feet from the center line. That is their property before this homeowner's property even starts. So what, from the center line of the roadway, how many feet in before we have the boundary line for this property? And does that show on the map?
Yes.
So here's the road, right here, and then this is about, I don't know if this is, this is 35.
I don't like them, didn't say how far.
So this is probably 50 feet from right here to right there. So when you're standing there, it's already 50 feet down the hill.
Yes.
And then this is another 35 feet down the hill. So all that was happening with the plants is they're making the plants a little taller so they match, I assume, the height of the chain link fence around the thing.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I was saying, so we approving the.
Sorry, I'm killing this microphone.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what, I was like, what is that? The, I mean, the way, because of the big setback on Crest Road, where you have the 50 feet and I guess an additional 35 feet, right? Before you even get to the tennis court, it is very close to the road, and I understand that the hill goes down a little bit, but are we, it sounded like from this report that this is being bifurcated, that we're not really dealing with the tennis court and the stable at this point, that we're only dealing with the other part of the project. But I think it's important to look at it as a whole and to be able to receive public comments, and if there are any, in addition to what has already been submitted about that. Because as I'm understanding, you're asking, or at least the Plan Commission was recommending, putting to screen the tennis court, which is close to the road, taller trees, which, reading in on page 64, paragraph P, it appears that the vegetation was not to exceed 10 feet in height, whereas it would have been no higher than the roofline of the nearest structure. So is that saying that the trees are allowed to be 10 feet as they are lined by the tennis court?
But just so you understand, the floor of the tennis court is 10, 15 feet, a little over 15 feet lower than the road.
I knew it was a little lower, I didn't know how much.
And it's about 85 feet down a hill, so it's basically almost double the distance from here to that wall, and 15 feet lower. So the trees, they're making them a little taller because the little cabana, whatever future ADU part thing, you can only go to the ridge line, so they're making it a little taller because the fence is gonna be taller than the little ADU that's sitting right there when they build it. So it's just making it taller so that way people aren't staring at the chain link fence down the road. Right?
I'm looking at their, at their grade on this. I thought it looked like it's 1280, the tennis court. And the road, is it 1295, is accurate?
The road's at 1300.
Was it 13?
Yes.
And so 12, am I accurate, 1280, I see it kind of midway through the tennis court, I don't see an actual.
Yeah, I don't see where it's exactly, but I was going with it being at 12.
Like there's a, there's an elevation line kind of running through it.
So at 1280.
I'm not sure that's where it is, but that's where, you know, it's running through.
So if it's at 1280, it's 20 feet down, it just, and I don't know if that's where they ended up in the grade, on this one at least.
Because I see another 12. I just, I, I, we'll get, we'll let them present, but have to make sure it's not trees that are gonna grow up and cause problems. Because to let them be a little higher, then they'll end up being a lot higher, and a lot higher, and a lot higher, and no one will trim them, so we'd have to find out, the trees have to be within our requirements. You can't plant eucalyptus or pine or something.
And right now, it's up to our staff to negotiate the tree part.
Shouldn't be a negotiation.
As in, to make sure it's not taller than you want.
And it won't ultimately get taller, because if staff changes, or 10 years, or 15 years, this is all forgotten, and it's blocking other people's views, it's a problem. Just gotta make sure we use the varieties that are part of our requirements, period.
Do you have anything else?
I think that's, one thing I wanted to ask, on page 41, you had the stable pad 2, but unlike the other requirements, you don't have a maximum guideline for that pad? Do we have one, a maximum limit for that? It's not listed there.
Okay, I apologize, but I do not have a.
Because it said it's, when it's built out, it'll be 46.24%, but I don't know what the max allowed is for that particular pad.
Oh, okay, yeah, maybe, yes. Oh, for, did you say for?
The stable pad, which is pad 2.
Oh, stable pad, okay.
It's the last one on the development table.
Gotcha, and you're saying there's not a maximum?
Yeah, because each of the other areas have a maximum listed above, for like the, and I don't know if it's under the guideline, because the pad 1 is a guideline, and for other pads, it's just gonna be the same guideline? I'm not sure, read.
Oh, okay. June 30?
I don't think there's a max pad.
Okay. I'm still the code here.
I guess in, while you're looking, is there, are we deciding both pads at this time, or are we only?
No, the whole thing, the whole thing.
Okay.
Regarding the house, this is the tennis court and the barn.
So they, they're basically swapping where the tennis court was? They wanted the tennis court out in the middle of the field, and so the Planning Commission said no. So they're moving the barn to the middle of the field, and they're moving the tennis court kind of over in the corner where it's steeper and not quite as in front of everybody.
It's pretty much in front of everybody still.
But, and then the pad area B is just, they take the overall graded area, that's the size of a less than 10% slope. How big that is, that's your area, and then you can build on a percentage of that.
Yeah, I just wondered, you know, if there was a max for that, but apparently.
It's all guidelines, there's no real true.
It's under the guideline, okay.
So it's like an awful lot of hardscape, does that driveway, is it like permeable? Is that why it doesn't count as giant amount of hardscape?
Yeah.
Because it looks like a giant driveway, like.
It is a long driveway.
House, it's like solid, solid.
Two Possum Ridge Road? That goes, that bisects the two lots?
If you look at your picture.
I'm looking at this up here.
Just with the turnaround.
Oh, I see, I see what you're talking about, the turnaround?
Yeah, so you got the tennis court, which is solid, then your giant turnaround, and then your house, and it's like solid hardscape. Now, if you use pavers, it doesn't count as hardscape, and I was wondering, is that pavers? Is that's why it's not?
Yes.
There, there's a knot over there.
Okay.
That's a way to get rid of your hardscape requirements, which is, this would be too much hardscape.
Yeah, right.
And I would love it if they'd cut down on the amount of driveway, who needs a driveway that big?
Okay, okay, so.
Bigger than the house.
Hold on, we're just going questions right here, so.
You're talking about taking it under our jurisdiction, things like that.
Oh, geez. All right, hang on a second, you go through your questions, Pat, you got any questions?
Yeah, so I'm early in your presentation.
I don't know, we're talking about something exciting.
My turn.
Okay.
Early in your presentation, you put up a screen that showed the conditional use permits were removed?
So at the April hearing, that was a portion of the application that was removed, the stable, corral, and sports court.
But there's.
And.
It's part of the O.
Then it was, so that portion of the application was heard at the October 15th meeting, and also.
What's on the screen, isn't that part of the approved portion?
All, so all the variances listed here?
It says conditional use permits removed.
Yes.
Do I understand that there are no conditional use permits?
There are.
It's confusing me because it says removed, and then further in the, in the presentation, it listed, I think, three?
So these were all, correct, all the conditional use permits were removed. So that was then, Phase 2 then was created and under separate.
One?
Right.
Okay, so Phase 2 does have conditional use permits.
So there are no conditional use permits approved, or that were approved prior to the December meeting, prior to the Phase 2 approval. During the.
Okay, I don't.
The December.
What was the relevance of that, of that screen? If they were removed and it's not part of the Phase 2, I'm not even sure why I saw that, because that confused me. So now, now there are conditional use permits for Phase 2?
Yes.
Okay.
And those are these, these listed here.
Right, okay.
Go ahead, nothing to do with the Phase 1 part of the project.
Any other questions, Pat?
Yeah, you, you had a screen that referred to the SWP plan and I think it was ERP. I mean, we have it in our agendas, but I don't think members of the public really know what a SWP plan is, and frankly, I was surprised to find out that a SWP plan is required for a residence. I thought that was just for a business location.
A split plan, meaning phased, as in two phases?
Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan.
S W P P P.
So the public comment from the Bellises?
Yes.
Okay.
No, there was, on one of your screens, it referenced a SWP, or maybe, maybe you took that from the public comment.
Yeah, it was from public comment.
Okay, so was there, there was questions about whether there was an application for the plan, or was there any comments from the agency? I mean, this is the first time I, I can remember at least, a residential project had to have a SWP plan, so.
Yep. No, I, I think what happened is, and I'm just guessing by the body language, is one of the neighbors complained, then we went on a hunting expedition and talked a fish and game, which honestly, we should never have done.
I'm not even talking about them, I'm talking about.
And then about the stormwater.
Right, I mean.
For this project, would it result in a requirement for an application for a SWP?
I'm not understanding your definition of a SWP plan, I apologize.
It's Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan.
They're being forced to do.
No, that's what I'm trying to find out, is this?
SWP?
Yes, SWP.
Not split?
No, SWP.
Thank you. Okay, so the stormwater plan. So that, that along with the geotech and the soils. Uh, so that, that along with the geotech and the soils report, all gets, um, reviewed separately, and in a, um, in the process where they're getting permits to build. So that isn't a process that happens at this point.
Okay, we rely on the county or the state?
Correct.
To review the?
Yeah, so they're state mandated, um, best managing prac- practices, uh, and so then that all gets reviewed, um, during the building permit process.
My question is, do you know if a SWP plan is required for a residential project? The reason I ask, I know what it is, cause my business has one. I thought it was a business requirement, not a residential, like a SEQA, you know, they're exempt from SEQA, cause it's a residential project. I'm just trying to understand the, the residents' concern, if that, you know, if it's a, a concern that will be satisfied with the application for a, a SWP plan.
Uh, so you're asking whether or not that is normally a, a residential requirement?
Or ever.
Mm-hmm. Um, so, here, uh, I believe that, uh, the stormwater plan does get reviewed, along with all of the, um, like Title twenty-four, and all of those other building, um, related, um, documents. And, uh, that's all, yeah, gone through the, the.
So all that gets done outside of our purview?
Yes.
Do what we do, and then it gets shipped off to somebody else?
So that's phase, well, stage two of the, of the construction.
Okay, thank you.
I would like, for the record, state I've been at the, um, site plan, pardon me, at the site visit, and at the deliberations of the planning commission. I do have, um, one question, Lisa, the wording, when we were at the planning commission meeting, it, the wording about how high the trees were going to be and everything was kind of, and I had some concerns at the time, it was kind of left to staff to decide that, as opposed to it being delineated at the time, you were given guidance of what to do. Um, and when I hear the report today, there is one part of it that, um, I thought it was approved for four to six feet above roof level, then there's another part that says it's four to six feet above crest. And I'm wondering which what it is, cause I think I'm seeing a, a, a conflict there. And secondly, just a comment that, one of the things that came up at the planning commission, and I'm not trying to speak for the planning commission, but this is a really, really, really high visibility project, and there was an attempt to try and allow some pri- some level of privacy, right now you can see how open the area is, while also having concern about making it look better, uh, fencing the, the chain link fence that's going to be there, putting that up. There are specific trees, first of all, we don't allow any planting of eucalyptus and pines anymore, so there won't be any new ones of those, but there is a, a rigorous, um, landscape plan that they will be submitting, of what types of plants, what types of trees they can put there, and a requirement, the discussion was that there would be a requirement, that those be maintained at that height, that that's the max. So it would be, it would be a code enforcement issue, if they don't. That was my understanding, and it's important that that is written into whatever we approve.
If we take it under consideration, we could then ask for the landscape plan we admitted, submitted prior to approval? Can we do that, or can we not?
Yes, but it would have to be, you guys would have to take it under jurisdiction, there's not a approval subsequent to any conditions that we, you guys may wanna discuss tonight. But if we approve it right now, it then goes to staff to work with the applicant, to do the landscape plan? That is my understanding, Mr. Mayor.
That's correct.
And if we take it under consideration, we can see the plan ourselves.
Is there any reason Jim couldn't show up? So, before we start any deliberations, wanna make sure we hear from the applicant and/or? Oh, no, I get it, I'm just trying to, is there any reason Jim couldn't go to the landscaping meeting, as a concerned citizen? He, I mean.
Of course I could.
Right?
Of course I could, but why, why?
Yeah.
Fight over, why not get it done properly, when we have the choice? Now's really our time to get it done properly.
I, I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm just looking at this like, if, if we're, if they're gonna build a tennis court, and they're gonna build a corral, this is basically what you can do, right? If you don't let them swap it, right? And your concern right now is the height of some trees.
No, it's not just my concern.
Okay.
My concern is the slope looking artificial by the barn, the slope looking artificial by the tennis court, the massive amount of hardscape by the tennis court, and you said we approved it, and I'm looking at the old map, and I didn't see that big driveway on the old.
It says existing driveway, so I can't tell you if that existing driveway is.
Before, existing conditions, that we looked at it before, and I don't see where I approved that giant turnaround.
Okay.
And so I'm concerned that there, you're gonna look down there, cause you're right, it's a problem, you're gonna see a massive amount of hardscape.
Okay.
Tennis court.
All right.
Massive driveway, massive everything.
Let's do this, let's open it up.
Oh, stand.
So, we're going to, no more questions of ourselves, we're gonna open up the public comment, is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? So, just.
Hi, Megan Campbell, the architect for the project. Um, I'm sorry Dan couldn't be here tonight, cause I think he can get more into the technical side of, uh, the grading, I'll take my best pass. Um, so, a couple things, the, uh, the reason that we're going over the max disturbance, the amount of grading, um, and the max wall height, all three of those, is because we were told to push the tennis court down, push the barn down. Um, so, with doing that, we have a taller wall on the backside, we have a little bit more grading. We could've brought it more to natural, um, grade, and reduce the amount of grading that we had to do, but we were trying to hide it from visibility.
The barn, you're talking about, or the tennis court?
Both.
Why do people wanna hide the barn, and why, they thought the barn was too prominent also?
There. There were concerns that it was feeling looming over the trail, because the trail starts right there, and there's kind of a pinch point.
There is.
Um, so, in order to bring the overall ridge height down, we lowered it by two feet, and lowered the top by two feet. So we made it two feet shorter, and pushed it down two more feet, um, and that was under the, the direction of the RHCA, we met with them to see where we could, yeah.
And then, the two to one, instead of using three to one, or something like that, was that to minimize disturbed area?
Yeah, that was mostly to minimize the disturbed area, if we wanna go to three to one. Um, also, another reason why we are having such a large disturbed area, especially on the barn side, is the request to widen possum, right now it's fourteen feet in some places. So we did widen it, and add some grading along possum to, for, for fire access. Um, and then, the landscape, we're trying to find a number that works for everyone, where we can have a little bit of privacy, not block any views. Um, if we were going by the height of the adjacent ridge, we wouldn't have any plants along crest. So you have a fence, and you couldn't plant to it, because the ridge of the house is lower. Um, so we were finding a height that you could have a, a smaller sized tree. Um, and if it's at four six, then it's, in theory, below the eyesight, and won't be blocking the eyesight from crest. Um, none of the neighbors, it's not blocking any views, um, we haven't had any, uh, neighbors that are actually concerned about view blockage.
Um, the big old turnaround driveway, that is, is that, my guess was right, it's paver, so it doesn't count as hardscape?
Yeah, and that was all part of phase one.
That was approved, that was drawn in my plan in phase one, I, I really don't, I didn't, I honestly don't see it. And I'm, I'm still looking at my stuff, and I still don't see it.
Hmm, okay.
But should it be here?
In the survey, it hasn't been built yet, it's in, uh, construction right now.
I mean, things, in phase one, where you've got, and I, I gotta tell you, phase one, where there's not a huge tennis court next to it, so there's not so much hardscape, a larger turnaround wouldn't be so obvious. Now you're adding this giant hardscape from a tennis court. It's a massive amount of hardscape next to each other. So, I, I don't know if that's really fair, quite honestly. And just because it's pavers, it still looks like solid, you're gonna look at an awful lot of concrete, looking down from the crest. An awful lot of concrete. Um, I, I think that's kinda sneaky, quite honestly, if they, I don't see it, quite honestly, where I approved it. And I can say, if I did approve it, thinking, okay, there's soft scape and land, yeah, all around it, and now suddenly, it's not, it's all hardscape all around it, and that's a lot. I mean, how many thousand square feet is that driveway?
I can't, I'm not sure.
It's bigger than the house. And it's bigger than a tennis court, and a tennis court's a lot of square foot.
Okay, it's like eighty-five, eighty-five, eighty for the primary driveway.
Eighty-five, eighty.
Uh-huh.
And then a tennis court, how many square foot's a tennis court, that's a lot, too.
Is it seventy-two?
Seventy-two hundred.
So there you got fifteen thousand s- square feet of hardscape, essentially, plus the house. Which is, is the house another eight thousand, or eighty-five, or something like that, at grade, I don't care about the, about the basin.
I think it's like six, yeah.
Sixty-two thirty?
Yeah.
Sixty-two thirty?
Sixty-two thirty.
You know, it's a half acre, it's hard to see.
Okay. All right, do you have any other comments?
No, that's it.
Hold on, not you, Jim.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's just me, I know, and I'm like, going it down by myself, I apologize.
Um, so, in terms of the landscape, um, we are going through the landscape plan check, and we have the landscape, uh, the planting palette, um, and the spacing and the location, uh, preliminary approved, um, through the third party, third party plan checker, and we're going through, um, fire now, for the, the landscape review. So, everything will be up to snuff, up to current code, and not using any invasive plants, or, or the high flammability plants. Um, should I address the Bellis letter, the, about the SWP?
Please.
Yeah, so we, uh, you trigger SWP after one acre of disturbance, and we haven't, uh, triggered it. Dan's gonna run the numbers again, and make sure that we don't, but, um, if we, if we do, we'd have to go through SWP, but that's the, the threshold. Um, and the rest of the letter, it was, um, kind of generally saying there should be a moratorium of building in this circle, but we've gone through, uh, the regular, um, uh, review of the soils report, and the hydrology, and, and everything, and there are no concerns, it's all been approved, um, with the, the first round of grading that we've already have underway.
Was there any, um, uh, association with, or mention or reference to the land movement on the other side?
Yeah, yeah, and I think they've set up, um, measurements, uh, that are tracking the land movement on our side of crest, and nothing's.
Uh, on, on the, the, the project site?
I, I, I think it was the RHCA that did it, it wasn't us that did it.
But on.
I think there's.
On the, on the project site, though, I'm talking, I know that there's, there's markers on the
Yeah.
uh, south side of crest, are you seeing them on the, on the north side?
I think they've placed some markers along possum, um, and they're tracking that, too, and making sure that it isn't moving.
Okay, and there's already been soils in the geotech reports?
Yeah, yeah, and it's all, it's all available, it's part of, um, the, I think it was part of the application. We did, uh, respond to the letter, Dan, I know addressed all the concerns, um, and we have the soils report, we can, we're happy to share it.
Oh, if, if we, if we approve this project tonight, it's gonna be irrelevant, as far as we're concerned, so, um, that's something you can, if necessary, you can bring back? Okay.
Oh, I'd like bring the project back?
No, if, if we don't approve it tonight, I don't know what we're gonna do.
Okay.
But if we don't approve it tonight, could we expect to see, um, or have a report on the geotech and the soils reports?
Yeah, yeah, we can share all of it.
Any other questions?
Um, just in, in terms of showing up the landscaping plan, um, it does, uh, the plans, or should say, the, um, approvals that were made by the planning commission does indicate that there has to be an approved landscape plan by the landscape consultant, as well as by the fire department, and, and so you're understanding that the ten feet in height for the screening of development, that's primarily for the tennis court to, to hide the, the chain link fence, but that is still not gonna be, uh, more than four to six feet above the ADU?
Above crest.
Above crest.
Above the adjacent portion of crest.
Okay.
So it would be, um, since there's no easement along crest, um, it just goes property line, and then the setback, the thirty-five foot setback. So we can do the fence right along the property line there, instead of within the easement, like, on most other, um, property lines in the city. Um, so we would do the fence along crest, and then we have, uh, uh, plants that are proposed right along the fence line.
I see, okay, and do you know what the, what those, um, plants are?
Um, it's mostly olive trees, I think are the, the trees that are proposed, um, and I think, off the top of my head, the landscape, uh, reviewer said they need to be placed fifty feet apart. And we would definitely have a condition of maintaining the height.
And that, that would be the screening for the tennis court, fifty feet?
No, we would do screening closer to the fence line of the tennis court.
So they were talking about two separate things, trees along the, the boundary line, the perimeter of the property, and then the variance for the, the tennis court?
Along the tennis court, we can actually screen, um, because the ridge height of, I think, the garage that's right there, or maybe the house itself, um, we can screen up to the top of that fence line, that's below the ridge height of the house.
I'm a little confused, the, the exception that you're asking for, for the four, was it four feet?
Four foot six, yeah.
What does that apply to?
Um, for the trees that are right along the property line, right along the fence line.
Suggesting to be olive trees?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's not directly adjacent to the tennis court?
No, there's a little buffer zone in between, and then right next to the tennis court, um, it's, we only need five feet more, because the wall goes down five feet, so you only need five foot of fence on top of that, so we can screen that.
So, if the, the olive trees you're talking about.
The max.
Are, go to their limitation, whatever that is.
Forty feet.
You're.
I absolutely know that, olive trees.
No, no, that's what they, that's what they're capable of, I, I get that, but, but no, no, I'm saying if they're, if they're maintained to what we're talking about here, I'm trying to, I walk crest all the time, so I'm six feet tall, I stand on crest, and I look, and I'm gonna see presumably the tops, well, I will see the top of the olive trees, am I, am I gonna see the surface of the tennis court?
I think how you're looking down at it, I think the trees that are up against the, the tennis court fence will provide the screening. The goal is to not see the tennis court from possum or from crest.
Not just the, not just the, the fence around it, but the, the surface of the tennis court itself?
Correct, yeah.
You think that that will be obscured by the, by, by the vegetation?
Um, part of, before we had the, the existing stable, we had proposed to do a change of use to that, of that, to make that the guest house. Um, but the planning commission told us to flip the stable and the court, so then we could use, um, the guest house to screen the court from possum. But now it's not a guest house anymore, cause that got removed from the scope.
Because why?
Uh, because they didn't want to approve a guest house.
Oh, yeah.
They said make it an ADU.
I would do the same thing.
Whatever you want, so, outside of our jurisdiction.
Yeah, but in theory, the, the guest house, the ADU will screen the court from possum, cause that's where you're coming right along it, where you'd see it more, um, but then from crest, we have thirty-five feet to work with of landscape screening.
Okay, all right, you good, you good?
Looks to me like, the property line's about twelve ninety, and crest. It looks to me like, the property line's about twelve ninety, and crest is thirteen hundred. Okay, and I, I absolutely know that the maximum height of olive trees is thirty-five to forty feet.
I have olive trees, I keep them trimmed, and they're not thirty-five or forty feet tall. I'm not saying they don't grow that high.
I do, so I can tell you, I have, I do have forty foot.
Jim doesn't trim.
The dwarf ones are about fifteen to twenty.
I don't remember the name of it, but I know he was proposing a variety, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Fred, do you still have a question?
Yeah. Do you have a comment and question?
Yeah, Alfred Visco, fifteenth century. I realize this is, that this is Phase Two, that it was, it's nothing to do with the house, or what's going on with the house. That was always, already prior approved. I don't know if I was paying attention the first time through, maybe I wasn't even aware of it, but when I, when I looked at, at the language, it looks like there's another fire pit going in. So here's another structure where we're gonna have an open flame and a fire pit. And it may not be anything we can do about it now, because obviously, we don't have any rule against it, and obviously, this was proved prior as part of Phase One, if, if I understand it. I agree with Pat, this is a very convoluted process here, where things have been done piecemeal. But I would encourage the applicant not to put it in the fire pit. And, and hopefully, the city council, this council will also encourage him not to put it in the fire pit. You know, I think, my other comment is the process on this particular parcel. I, I don't think you should do this, I don't think this should have been done this way. If you're gonna, if you're gonna approve something, that should, the whole thing should be laid out and approved at one time. Not piecemeal, not saying, oh, I'm gonna withdraw it and then come back later on, and we're gonna flip things around, we're gonna do this. This process, this, this particular parcel should not have been approved in this, in this, in this procedure. I'm sorry. It's just, you know, I would never have been able to get away with this, when I did my major remodel back in the nineties. If I said, oh, well, you know, maybe I'm thinking of putting in a, you know, a barn a little later, or corral a little, yeah, you know, maybe I wanna make the garage bigger than, than what I was agreed to. No, I mean, this should have been done, one shot, everything. Everything that was structural should have been presented and approved in one process. This process sucks on this parcel.
I don't know why you guys let it...
I don't know why you ever did it this way. But my other issue, my main issue, you know, I, you know, I don't really care about the aesthetics. That's not my thing. My thing is safety. And I would really not like to see a fire pit on this pro, on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Hearing none, we're gonna close, couple of comments. Does anyone like to make a motion?
I think it's a really prominent lot, and I, I would, I would make a motion that we take it under consideration.
Second.
Okay, roll call? Okay, Councilmember... Yeah. May, you want?
Yeah.
I mean, I just...
I guess, I guess the question in terms of what focus, I just say this to Dr. Black and, and Councilwoman Wilson, the focus for our review, I just wanted to know what you, what you thought.
They can only review what is in this, this presentation. So, truthfully, you can maybe negotiate the driveway or whatever, but the driveway was theoretically the part of the first one?
Which I didn't see, but...
Okay, but, well, it's part of the first one, house is approved, the fire pit's approved, whatever's approved, and just like everybody else who builds in this city, just almost say what Fred's saying here is, we built our house, barn's part of the second part, people do it all the time, come back and add a barn five years from now, three days from now, or fifteen years from now, or never. So, is the process optimal? No, but it's the way it happened, and if people submit a project, we have to go through the process to do it, and here we are.
Right.
So...
I don't. As somebody who served on both planning commission and here on council, I don't believe in giving the planning commission, just because they've approved it, that I think everything that they do is, is fine, that I don't have problems with some things. And I myself have asked for an item or two to come back for our purview. However, in this case, it's a little frustrating for me, for someone who's been following this all along, through all the processes for the last almost two years I think this has been going on. The amount of work and time and negotiations that have gone on between the planning commission and the applicant and their representatives, to throw that all out and take it under our purview, seems to me, the planning, it, it's hard for me to convey everything that went through, you know, I did bring up the one question that I had about, I wasn't quite sure about the leaving something to staff, to, I'm still not clear on that, but, I just, I'm hesitant to, you know, I would like to, like to agree with you, 'cause I know you're looking for the, the right things, but I'm hesitant to do that when I see all the work that's been done on this to this point, and the good faith efforts of everyone, and in interest of, the sooner this thing gets moving and looking better than having the caterpillar sit up there on the top of the mound and everything that's going on on it. I think it's a waste, not a waste, it would be a shame to make that condition last longer, put applicants through, going through a presentation again for us, more site visits. This property has been flagged, we've seen it, people could have looked at the property if you'd had... Had any questions about it? Could have asked the planning commission, or asked staff a question? I just, I don't think I, I can support it, I mean, I'd like to, but I, I think all the due diligence has been done on this, and not just 'cause it was the planning commission.
Yeah, no, but, and that's fine, and I can tell you, I look at it all the time, and I haven't seen the tennis court flagged, and I haven't seen this giant driveway flagged. I see the barn flagged, I see the, I saw the house flagged, I got no problem, I thought to myself, they should have gone more, I guess it's north, and gotten a little more flat land. If I was, I might have graded a little more and take my, the whole grade down another foot and gotten myself a whole bunch more usable land, but that's just me. I thought they wasted space they could have had usable. But I don't see the tennis court flagged, and I sure don't see that driveway flagged.
And I think it is flagged.
The flag, well, the flag, I think it was flagged, I know it was flagged when we went out on the field.
Well, and also, so, and...
How could it be flagged, 'cause it wasn't even part of the project?
No, no, we, there were separate site visits to, to do the, to move the tennis court, the original tennis court was flagged...
Right.
On the east side of Possum.
Where the barn is.
Right, so then when they moved it back, and we, when they flip-flopped, it was, it was flagged again.
And, and for me, the one, and we're gonna vote here tomorrow, but, is, for me, the issue I have is if we, the planning commission tried to cram that thing lower and lower and lower, which is generating different problems, which is steeper slopes, et cetera. If we wanna revisit the amount of grading we're allowed to happen, or the, 'cause if we said, the grading rule's off, and you can do as much grading as you want, but we're looking for the most natural feeling whatever, people would design around that. The problem is, we're telling these people, we want as low as possible, we want it out of the view, we don't want anything to block the view, we want it pushed down, we want your tennis court not where you wanted to put it, we, so they swapped it with the other side. So, I mean, I feel like this has gone for a long time, and there, I mean, honestly, the reason I'm here is 'cause I went through the planning commission process, and I was surprised that the rules weren't all written down or whatever, we worked hard on getting us there. So if the rules we now have aren't making sense to what we really want, we should probably revisit those and get, figure out how to get those to make sense. That's my thing, 'cause I'm not against Jim on this part, that my, my whole back of my house is all two to one, it looks ridiculous, but that's what they wanted at that point in time.
And at the back of your house doesn't matter, 'cause it's not usable anyway. And nobody sees it.
Well, if you walk on trail, you see the back of my house.
I do, I was there for the dumpster just last week.
I appreciate you. Okay, so, all right, so let's...
And the only thing I was, I was just gonna say, I agree that, with the mayor, that there may be some things we wanna look at for the future. I do agree with Mr. Visco that it makes for better look if we have a comprehensive plan, and we, but in this particular case, it looked like the planning commission wanted to separate it out, or, or was agreeable with them separating it out.
They weren't trying to separate it out, they said, we're not gonna let you put it over here. So if you wanna approve something, this is where, we're not gonna prove that, we're not gonna prove the tennis court over there.
So then...
So you deal, they could have waited two years to come back with what they were gonna do over there. But I believe that their intent was that they did want a barn. They didn't bifurcate, they didn't purposely bifurcate, they didn't know when they were gonna come back and do that. Same with, there was a suggestion made that they do an ADU instead of the guest house, so that an ADU couldn't, if they built a guest house, they could then still come back and build an ADU later. So I mean, there's been a lot on this project to, to try and deal with what's, what's there.
So, roll call, go ahead.
Councilmember Mersch?
No.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember, uh, Black?
Yep.
Mayor Proton Derringer?
I'll say no.
And Mayor Piper?
No.
Okay, make a new motion, somebody? Hold it, just so you're paying attention, that was us not approving the motion for us to take it under advisement, for us to take it over, so now...
I can't believe it, B was easy to get along. This is easy, this is a free-to-do, B's not gonna...
Well, you know, I had to think of it. Make a motion to receive and file.
I'll say second to that.
Can we have a roll call?
Okay, Councilmember Mersch?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
No.
Councilmember Black?
No.
Mayor Proton Derringer?
Yes.
And Mayor Piper?
Yes.
All right, so, there it is, painful, but it was done. But I'm serious, if we have a problem with some of how the rules are, we should change them, or have a meeting with the planning commission.
You just did change them, because normally they have the landscape plan, and you just let them not have it.
Hang on, hang on, ten B, ten B, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, we're moving on to ten B. Zoning case number twenty-four dash zero five three, conditional use permit for the detached structure that exceeds two hundred square feet located on forty, seventy-four Eastfield, Rolling Hills. Project is exempt from secur.
Also being presented by Principal Planner, Lisa Edwards.
Good evening, once again. The property is zoned RAS one. The subject property is located on Eastfield Drive on the southeastern portion of the city. As you can see in this aerial, the rear property line borders Rancho Palos Verdes. The new cabana is located far from any adjacent structures, and it does not obstruct any views of any adjacent neighbors. There is an existing single-family residence on the property, along with an attached garage, a pool, along with two existing trellises. The existing hundred sixty-five square foot trellis located at the southeast portion of the building pad will be demolished and replaced with a new three hundred fifty-five square foot cabana. The total square footage of the cabana with a roof is four hundred and ninety-eight square feet. Is no grading required for the new cabana, and the project complies with all of the development standards and the municipal code. A conditional use permit, however, is required because the project exceeds two hundred square feet. The proposed cabana can be seen here in blue, and it does not encroach into any of the setbacks. This is just in reference, for reference of locating any nearby residences and roads. The existing hundred sixty-five square foot trellis is getting weathered and will be demolished and replaced with the new cabana. The new cabana will be open on three of the four sides and have a solid roof. The maximum height of the cabana at the highest point is twelve feet and one inch. No public comment was received during the planning commission hearing process, and the appeal period has now ended on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. And the proposed, as, as proposed, the project complies with, again, all of the municipal development standards. Been determined to be categorically exempt pursuant to section one five three zero three, which repines to accessory structures including garages, carports, patios, swimming pools, and fences. During the planning commission meeting in December, the commission opened the public hearing, took public testimony, and provided direction to staff and the applicant, adopted resolution twenty twenty-four fifteen. And at this time, staff recommends that the city council file and receive the adopted resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifteen.
Any questions? 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 We're gonna like to open public hearing, does anyone have any public comments? Seeing none, we're gonna close the public hearing, someone like to make a motion?
Proceed and file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, passes. All right. You never know. I mean, a gazebo, thank God we're here. All right, we're moving on to thirteen A, receive an update for the emergency outdoor sirens notification system, project, and the standard operating procedures.
Good evening, Mayor Piper and City Council. This evening, we have HQE here to present their safe network grant to the city and answer any questions the council may have. Before I turn things over to them, staff would like to provide a brief status update. I wanted to mention that there's a blue folder item in your pocket this evening. This letter is a letter by the block captains, presented by Mrs. Arlene Hombo. The letter addresses concerns about the effectiveness of the siren system. I would like to mention a slight correction to that letter, which states that one speaker was added to the pole located at Fire Station Fifty-Six. I just wanted to clarify that, that installation of that speaker will be happening early February, when HQE will also carry out their reconfiguration work. I should also mention that the extra speaker is being installed at no cost to the city. The, the speaker will be angled towards the flying triangle portion of the city, and once the reconfiguration process is complete, staff will schedule the next siren test. The first test was in October, and it, this test was to see if each speaker in the system was operational. This test was not at full volume, but rather at ten percent capacity. This was also true for the second, for the first portion of the second test. During the second half of that test, the vendor was establishing at what hertz level worked best with the city's topography. It was determined that five hundred to eight hundred hertz range was best suited. And then the third test, the voltage and impedance balance was not to HQE's satisfaction, and the test was canceled, so no sirens were sounded on that particular test. To date, a full-scale siren test has not been performed, and my point being that this is something to consider when we're discussing the effectiveness of the test. A fourth test will be scheduled shortly after the reconfiguration is complete, and to ensure the effectiveness of the test, staff along with the assistance of the block captains and HQE staff will be out in the field and noting the range of the sirens. Following the test, the city will again request the assistance of the RHCA to send out a survey to residents. Once that feedback is presented, staff will work with HQE to fill any shortfalls, to fulfill any shortfalls. HQE has offered to host an educational webinar for residents to launch the sirens into its operational phase. The attached standard operating, operating procedures document was provided by HQE at no cost, again, to the city, and, and then it was edited by staff, which incorporated feedback from one member of the ad hoc committee. And then it was edited by staff, which incorporated feedback from one member of the ad hoc committee. Staff reached out to the cities of Malibu, Torrance, Laguna to see if they had an SOP. And unfortunately, staff were not able to secure such documents. Staff researched nationwide and found enough material that was relevant to incorporate this information into the SOP and that you'll find in your folder. As laid out in the staff report, the siren project has been a very lengthy endeavor, spanning approximately four years. And staff provided the history of the project to assist with this evening's discussion. Following HQE's presentation, staff are open to receiving recommendations for finalizing the SOP. And staff will also work with the ad hoc committee to incorporate their suggestions. Staff are seeking direction this evening on potential path forward with the SAFE network and you, and you, sorry, the SAFE network and the units, which HQE will now elaborate on.
Ladies and gentlemen, here to answer any questions on the state of the project, I'll also give you an update for it. Charles West, I took over as a project manager for this project. I originally was the first one to come up here and survey the project four years ago. Been working hand in hand through all aspects of the company, from day one of this, picking all the sites and also some proposals that went forward. As Samantha said, right now, we are still in a phase of testing the speakers, trying to find the exact frequency range that's needed. It wasn't at full power at that time during the testing. Unfortunately, we are still conducting those tests. We have had delays, given the sensitivity of the high winds at the fire up north. We put in a couple referrals to SCE to shut down the power, especially at the East Gate, given what is going on and we don't want to cause any issues if there was something to happen. Because of their, I would say, short-term, or they don't have a lot of hands on deck right now. Usually it takes about 10 days to shut the power down. They've told us anywhere between 20, 20-plus. So we're kind of working at the limitations of them. Do you have any questions on either SAFE or where we're moving forward on some of these projects?
I'll go first, Pam.
I do. Did I, Sam, did I hear you say that prior testing was only at 10%?
Yes, so the very first test was at 10% capacity. It was not at full range and you're welcome to.
10% of the sirens' power, sir. So the sirens are.
Full level?
Yes, sirens are capable of putting out 155 decibels, especially up at the one on the fire station on Crest Ridge.
What is 10%? I know it's a logarithmic scale, so what is 10%?
It's, if we were to crank the volume to 100% on there, we are operating at 10% of their capacity, trying to figure out what the frequency range was. Because we also want to take into effect that we didn't want to turn it up all the way. And for a home that's immediately across the street from it, cause an issue to them, whether it be damaging to their ears or not.
I understand that part, but there was at least one questioner by, I don't know if it was by the city or by our association, asking, did you hear it? But if you're testing at 10%, maybe.
Because if we had identified that at 10% volume, that the person over in this area was hearing it and it was at 70 decibels, that we can continue to find to that, can we take it up to 20, can we take it up to 30, expand that out even farther? Can they still hear it there while also endangering the hearing of the people that are immediate in the proximity of that tower?
Okay, so there was three tests, the first one at 10%. What were the next two at?
The next two were at 10% because we are trying to identify any areas that weren't here.
Well, surprise to me, I'm pretty much either at or outside the range of two houses that are like right on the border of the 70 decibel, you know.
Envelope.
So I don't know, at 10%, I'll never hear it. I don't think I was home when these happened anyway. But even at the full, whatever, whatever 100% is, I don't know if I'll hear it because like I said, I'm basically off the scale anyway, so. Okay, thank you.
Leah.
This project, although it's taken four years, I know it's hard to believe, there was a sense of urgency about it required a lot of decision-making deliberation on the part of the council and the public was involved with it. We started off with the original recommendation being more than three poles. Long history of why we're back at three, but we had received a commitment that HQE felt that it would be able to cover those areas that you showed us with all the concentric circles with three. I'm starting to wonder, do you, do you think that, I mean, do you think that's still? Because that's what the contract said. That's what we signed up for. And I'm getting concerned that we're going down a road of, we're not, we don't seem to be meeting what we started out, what we agreed to. And I'm just wondering if you can kind of shed some light on that and maybe quell my fears on that.
Yes, ma'am. So I've talked to my director and Kais CEO about this. And after we've concluded the testing, if there are areas that are identified that are outside that envelope, we would look at to adding existing poles, whether they are smaller ones, so you're not going to see something the size of that. It'd be more of smaller speakers on it, more like a scalpel instead of a sledgehammer for that area. And that would be more than likely at HQE's cost for those areas. So if there is expansion that is needed, that's what we would cover. We're dedicated to making sure that this is a successful project, not just for us, but also for you. Because at the end of the day, this is life safety for your community. And we don't want to leave it to where somebody isn't going to get the notifications that they need for that spot.
And I appreciate that. And the other concern that we have, and I certainly appreciate that you say that you would be, you know, we would get more scalpel-like, smaller towers or speakers, we have a problem with where they can be located. Because everything's private property except the, you know, the easements. And we've had some issues with getting approval from the association in, even in the easements. So we were lucky to get the three places that we've got. Is there a possibility that you could add, and I'm not suggesting this, I mean, but is putting, and I'm sure you're thinking about this, is putting more speakers on the existing poles like you did on the fires, the one near the fire station? Is that something that could be looked at at others? Because I'm worried that we're running out of places to put these.
I've already talked to Christian and Samantha about it, depending on the location. We'd have to look at them after we get the full testing back to actually see those areas. We identified one up at the fire station where that'd be an easier bolt-on for another speaker aiming west down towards the triangle. It would depend on the testing and coming back, whether it would be, can we add another two speakers, another speaker to the existing towers? Or would it require a smaller, more focused tower for a specific area?
And you have an approximate time of when we could get another test? That it's, obviously, the 10 decibel, the 10% isn't working. And we can, we can do one that would be more like what you think that we would be hearing. Because people are, people are, I mean, you're seeing the comments and I appreciate the thing about the webinar and all of that. You guys have really tried for us and I appreciate everything you're working with. It's just that, you know, we're getting questions on this now and we thought that we were moving along and we seem to be hitting this kind of glitch. I'm just looking for maybe the, some more movement on, on seeing something that we can really say here, we've got something.
I understand, because it was one of the difficulties that we encountered with Paradise. It's once people started seeing polls going up there, asking when's the next testing, when it's going to happen, where the people are home or not, as they're going. As soon as we can get SCE to take down the power at the East Gate, we're going to go around and continue our testing, where we're going to be fine-tuning some of the firmware, fine-tuning the speakers, and then we'll be doing testing from there. We're looking at middle of February, late February, doing it at the source. Where does, our hands are tied with SCE and when they can actually turn the power off at the East Gate.
I understand SCE's, that their hands are tied right now.
Councilmember, if I may, our, our schedule with HQE was to have begun that process this past week into this week, where we would have actually tested, I think we were saying either Wednesday of this week or Thursday of this week. And the fires and, you know, the dispersion of SCE employees really set us back, you know, related to that.
But why would you be talking about adding a speaker if you haven't even tested it at operating level?
Some of the preliminary data coming back from it, as we, as we were walking around grabbing the decibels, what we already had, we were already starting to identify whether we can do some tweaks here and there. And it's part of our co-essor, is we immediately identify an issue, what other issues may arise from it, and we start developing multiple plans.
Well, where you just mentioned, that's where my house is, or houses, it's down the bottom of the flying triangle. Okay, thank you.
Jim? E?
Yeah, so, and follow up on this question. So, given that you have this in pass because Southern California Edison is busy right now, what about testing the other two sirens, so we can kind of refine those and at least get started with that? Have you thought about doing something like that?
We have, ma'am. We're just trying to get everything together at once and do one shot together with it. Instead of constantly alerting everyone for different things and disrupting the daily life. Because with Fire Crest potentially having to close down traffic for someone there, we're trying not to impact everyone at once.
What would you be closing down traffic for?
The bucket truck, if we have to go up in the air and conduct any calibrations on the speakers, if we have to close down a lane for it, just try not to impact daily life.
So when you do this testing, you have a bucket truck up at the speaker?
We do the testing and if we have to make any calibration changes, sometimes we have to go up into the air and adjust it. Other times, we don't, it's just firmware down at the bottom.
Well, there was a question I had with regard to, on page 126, it says on November 6th, or actually, November 18th, that you did, I'm sorry, it was a December 3rd date. Because you did a bunch of the second siren test and then you did some, some refinements. And then you said you did an impedance testing on each speaker to make sure the 500 to 800 frequency would, would sound at the maximum volume without overloading the amplifiers. And then you, then there was a reference in the staff report that it wasn't to your satisfaction, so the test was canceled. Well, what exactly didn't, didn't work? Because that is the frequency range that you determined was best suited for our city.
Without, without giving away trade secrets for it. The equipment and the current firmware for it was not within our specifications for where we wanted it to be. So we had to go back to the drawing board and see where the glitch was in it. From there, we met, from there, we've already identified the fix and it's just coming back up, re-flashing firmware. So with everything, we, it's a quality control check for us, making sure it's within our specifications.
So has there been a new design for, to, to work around that issue?
Updated, we just have to come up in and update the firmware physically on the towers.
What is firmware?
Firmware would be the coding that operates, if you will, the brain inside the towers.
You don't call it software, you call it firmware?
We call it firmware, yes, sir.
But it's software? Yes or no?
Firmware is like you change the BIOS on the bottom, like the hardware of your equipment, and then you put software on top of it.
And, and so, the, this, since you updated the firmware, can you do the physical, at least get started with the physical work on the other two sirens while you're waiting for SCE?
We have to physically update the firmware on the towers right now, ma'am. We haven't done that yet.
Have not? And does that, can that be done remotely or do you have to be physically doing that?
We physically do it. We come up here and we physically do it.
And is there any obstacle with getting that part done while we're waiting for SCE?
No, but again, we like to do it all at once. That way, it's not a multiple site trip. You have everyone at one time, you update it, we run the tests immediately after.
Well, how much?
And to, I should just make a clarifying point, Mayor Pro Tem, that testing them as three units versus a singular or two units is going to provide a much more realistic picture of what we need to find out. So to do all the work in one fell swoop, to rent the trucks and the equipment and then test all three speakers at the same time would make more sense for us to really gather the data. And then, you know, not continue to have to ask the residents for their feedback if it's not how it is supposed to perform in a real-life situation.
Right, and do you have, this, were they going to have to go for your staff to each siren individually, right? I mean, you're not going to have people do it simultaneously or enough personnel to do all that?
We have enough personnel to do it. It's just having the trained person on site along with the technicians to go to each tower physically and do it.
And but are you doing, having people at, at three towers at once so you can test things, how they work in tandem?
We can, yes.
I mean, where are you planning?
Usually you would, you would have a field engineer themselves, the person responsible and trained on that hardware, would usually do every tower himself and then we'd usually have a technician at each tower, play the test, take the readings all together at the same time.
Okay, and so, so this is waiting to be tested out to get the remedy to see that you can have a remedy for this issue that you detected. All right, and then in getting to regarding, the issue's come up because in the standard operating procedure, and it's good to have a template, so we appreciate that, because apparently, I guess Paradise doesn't have one, right? They don't have a, a procedure book that they're using?
We, we had to work with them to develop one based off of state and FEMA's best practices.
And do they have one now?
I would have to check in with the project manager who's handling that one and get it over there.
And are the, are the sirens up and running in?
They are, yes. We've been doing monthly tests for the past year there. I think at this point, there is one tower that is, has an AC line that has to be attached to it and that's just been hung up by PG&E, but they've been running off solar. AC, once they were put in there, stepped it back up until solar became a backup charging source for them. But they've been up and running for well over a year now.
But don't they have something like 30 towers?
20, 22, sir.
Okay, and so with respect to the, the, what we found out about the procedures and the protocol that you suggested, that you're recommending the SAFE network systems, which is what you call the, the device inside the home. So I'm asking, is this something that the system is not going to work unless, and can't be really heard inside the home unless somebody has one of these devices in their home?
So the, these are outdoor warning sirens. Why they can give coverage inside a house, depending on how close you are, windows open, structure of the house, terrain mitigations, the outdoor warning sirens. We, a while ago, identified that there might not always give coverage inside of someone's home. And we developed another product that provides that coverage inside there. At no point is this build the SAFE network as a stopgap to make the whole system work. It's something that we identified and said, we can provide this to you additionally with the transmitters for them being at cost of HQE, not for the city, and then the units at cost of what it costs us to get them and build them to the residents as well if they chose to go that way. It's effectively putting a transmitter inside each home, if you so choose.
Okay, and there was indication that you would do it at your cost, but what cost is that? What, how much do these units cost?
700 transmitters plus around three gateways is roughly $60,000 that HQE would be absorbing. That would be at no cost to the city.
That's the individual units? Are you saying the system so that these units, so the system?
It's almost a separate indoor system from the, from the sirens themselves.
So this would be, and where would that be set up, that system?
You could, so ideally, a gateway on flat ground with no terrain mitigations covers a range of roughly seven, 7K, so seven kilometers, if you will. Given the terrain here, we feel comfortable saying each transmitter would probably cover roughly 3,000 meters. We would put a transmitter at each tower right now to give coverage over the whole area, potentially just like with using a scalpel for a smaller tower. If we would put one out there, we would want to put a transmitter on one of those as well to give coverage for it. But again, that was not at cost to the city, that's us covering it.
And, and so this would be the firmware to speak, or the system?
This is a separate system, ma'am. That's a separate indoor system.
And, and that, that would have to be installed separately from the sirens? And, and that, that would have to be installed separately from the sirens that you?
Yes, but we could mount them on the same existing poles and the same cabinetry. That's why we're also doing that at Paradise as well.
And, and then terms of the cost for the individual, because you said that, that for a unit within a home, that, that would be at your cost, but I don't know what that cost would be.
It's roughly $90. So, instead of any sort of markup where we'd make a profit on it, we'd sell the unit for every person that wanted one of the indoor units, would be a $90 cost.
And is there maintenance and update fees?
There's warranties obviously associated with it, just like if you'd buy a phone, a laptop, anything that you have your yearly warranty on, two-year warranty, and that, those units would fall under that warranty for it. But the safe units are, they have a battery backup on them. You plug them into the wall, it looks like if an Alexa, if you will, and it just sits there, and they receive a low-frequency RF message. It'll play that message inside your home for you to hear, and that is in addition to any outdoor warning siren.
You said voice only or?
So, we can do loaded messages on each one, or we can just do a tone message. It's, depends on your area and what you want for it.
Thank you. And with respect to the, what was in the contract, that obviously didn't entail this kind of a system. So, the, my question is, without having these transmitters, so to speak, in individuals' homes, what are you saying as far as the, your information and what you're saying that the three sirens we have, how they would be heard to the, to the residences that we have in Rolling Hills? I mean, what, what's your statement about that? I just want to know.
We are confident that the three sirens will work and provide that 70 dB coverage outside to all the residents. In the event that there is a area that doesn't have it, that's where we would look to install another siren at our cost, not Rolling Hills' cost.
So, you're saying that somebody has to be outside the home to hear it?
They are, they are outdoor warning sirens. You can hear them inside the home if you are close enough, windows open, terrain mitigation, construction, hard of hearing.
Okay. Well, all I'm saying that's.
Okay. So, all right. So, let me just summarize where we're at here is, we put the three poles in, for sure we're going to put one more siren in to see how that works. We're going to update the firmware, then we're going to run a test. At that point, if it doesn't deliver the 70 outside of everyone's house, which some people will be able to hear inside, some won't be able to hear, depending on how your hearing is, depending on how thick your windows are, depending on a whole bunch of things, you will add an additional what's necessary so that way we can meet what you guys planned on delivering.
Yes, sir.
Then, to supplement that, you guys are willing to add an additional level, which would then be added to the poles wherever they are, that would then put a little box or thing inside your house, which then would supplement that to the, whatever's going on the outside.
Yes, sir.
Okay? Currently, right now, the poles work as well as they work. Do we have access to turn them on? Because even if they're not right, they're still better than nothing.
Yes, sir. Actually, back on January 8th, when we were working with staff, when the fires went up in Palisades, we put together an action team that if we had to send messages out, we could. I personally was one of them. I worked at like a shift as in, I was in the military, if I had a fire watch shift.
Yeah.
And there was about two or three nights straight where I was up between 1:00 and 4:00 o'clock in the morning, cell phone, computer, ready to hit activate if we had to.
Okay. Can we get it, since we're going to need to be able to activate this on our own in the future, can we get the activating it by ourselves without you done?
I can go back to them, sir, and I can look that, we work with staff, that way the whole book is set out and the logins are given out.
Because the SOP we have right now, wrong or right, it's what we have right now, so to me, it's perfect.
Sure.
So, what we want to be able to do is activate what it is while you guys are still adjusting your hardware so we can use what we have. Then, the next time you come back, could you bring one of these little magic boxes so everyone can see one of what it looks like?
Sir.
And then we'll go from there. But as long as we can activate what it is, and then, once you have access and SCE shows up and turns it off, and you guys can make the next improvements, then we can go step by step and keep making it so we can get to the end of this, which is delivering what you guys say. We appreciate you guys' willingness to step up to make that happen, but I'd like to be able to use it even if it's at 60% if we had to. All right. Anyone else? Okay, so I'm going to.
I do have, I'm sorry, just, just one thing. Um, never, never mind. I lost it.
All right. Then I'm going to open it for public comment, so just, and if you have any questions, ask them to us, we'll write them down, and then we'll, you can answer them all in one shot.
Sir.
That way, you're not being peppered. Anyone have any public comments?
Arlene Hanbo, 33, Portuguese Bend. And, you know, I'm one of the lucky ones who've been around for about four years talking about the, you know, emergency systems, right? So, um, so, the original contract, or the original solution, the doc, the document that was submitted by HQE, yeah, did list out all their indoor and outdoor sirens. So, their outdoor sirens were meant to be installed outside, their indoor sirens were meant to be installed inside. We, we were never, it was never communicated to us that you had to be outdoors to hear the outdoor siren. And in fact, their documentation for the indoor sirens was not viable for us because you needed the internet or power to use the indoor siren systems. And even in their, their solution document, it says that's not a feasible solution for what we're looking for, because our requirement said, we want to be able to be notified if there's no power. So, I just want to underscore that. So, there's this expectation from residents that we would be able to hear this, this, the sirens when there's no power. Now, yes, we heard all the caveats that, you know, if you're hard of hearing, or if you had your stereo on full blast, you know, yeah, you, you might have some difficulties, you know, hearing that. But it was never communicated to us that if we were indoors, we wouldn't be able to hear it. And again, I know, I appreciate that HQE is still doing all the testing. We know it's not finished. We're glad it's not finished because there's a lot of residents who can't hear it. But, you know, we do have an expectation that, that most of us should be hearing it. And the letter that was submitted does have a few comments. We don't have, we don't have access to, or at least I haven't been able to recover where the survey is, it was on Dwelling Life for a while, but, you know, I haven't been able to retrieve that. But some of the block captains did, did submit that they couldn't hear it during the test, and they're kind of all over the city. You know, it's not like in one, it's not like where Pat lives. You know, there, Pappy Trail, Chuck Wagon, you know, Hummingbird Lane, Portuguese Bend. So, you know, there are spots all over the place. So, um, the, the other statement that I just want to make before I have a question that you can start accumulating for HQE is that they, in their proposal, they, they talked about the portfolio of solutions, right? They talked about that we could start, that this proposed solution allows City of Rolling Hills to meet the initial mass alerting, alerting systems, which is the outdoor sirens. And that, that we, we, Rolling Hills can stay, scale later to any indoor alerting system. So, it's right there in, in their documentation. So, you know, we're happy that, you know, they're including, you know, a device that could help us scale so that we have every tool available to us. But we still want the original proposal that was sold to the city and desired by the residents to work as, you know, as it was sold to us. I mean, that's the expectation, and that was really the spirit of the, of the letter. The question, the questions that I have for the, so, so let me back up. I'm expecting that we would get a pretty good test of the, of the sirens in the poles. And if we need to add some additional poles, hopefully, the community association would be open to putting some on their easements, or maybe the city would use the property owned, you know, that we also own on Storm Hill. I know that that's one piece of property that the city owns. But given the, the recent fires, there are a lot of people who are on edge, and we, we know, it's, it's, it's almost like I feel reminiscent of, you know, Leo remembers the original questions we had for the community association with the gate, the closed gate, where we submitted it, the block captain submitted it, and it was like, no, never mind, go away. And, you know, eventually, we got that gate automated, and, and now it's an exit route. So, maybe the community association would be a little more amenable if we needed to install some poles because people want to be safe. Okay. With that, I'm sure you all heard this before. With that, the, the, I did go on to the HQE's network. They have a very nice website, not network, their website, and I downloaded their technical brochure on the little safe network. And it does say that the gateways that would be installed on the three poles does have a limitation if there's hills and trees, and of course, we have canyons. So, you know, if it's a flat surface, it has a capability of connecting to these individual devices of 10 miles, but, but there's, it's only two miles if it's, if it's, if you have hills and, and trees, and I'm assuming canyons. And so, my question is, you know, to HQE, how can we be assured that this would not be like our cell phone coverage? Because we know, we don't, we have very few towers here, and we have horrible cell phone coverage, and we're, we've still been, we've been waiting, at least I've, we've lived here since 1988, and we, we're still waiting for more cell phone towers. And, you know, we all have that experience, right, Pat? You have to go into a little area in your house where you know you're going to get some connection, but if you're somewhere else, you know?
I call it the talking chair.
Right? Then, well, a lot of us are like that. So, or you get a communication, but it doesn't, doesn't happen right away, maybe you get a text message two hours later, or, you know, the next day, or whatever it is. So, how do, how does HQE know that, that, that scaling of their portfolio will work in our topography? I mean, I'm, I'm glad we have an option, but, you know, it's, it's, our topography has already proven that, you know, we have difficulties with cell phone coverage.
Thank you. Anybody else with a public comment?
Live at nine, Portuguese Bend. I just wanted to say, I'm really excited about this project. At first, I was a little skeptical, but after the latest round of the fires, and I found myself in Europe, and my wife and family were home by themselves, getting a, a phone call at eight, or four in the morning on the AMB Alert system, you know, and not knowing if it was real or not, was a little difficult to deal with. So, having an alert system would have been really helpful if it was fully functional. But it sounds like the guys at HQE are, are working hard and coming up with solutions, so I just want to say, it sounds like it's going down the right path, and for people that don't have, you know, are not in the envelope, and there's a solution there to, to have an in-house option. I think they're, it sounds like they're doing everything they can to get a solution for us, so those are, that's, that's all I had to say, so thank you.
Thank you. Fred?
Yeah, again, I'm, you know, this wasn't my favorite project from the beginning, but there's something to be said about having our own independent notification system, given that the county can't seem, given that the county can't seem to send out their notification systems to the people that they want to send it to rather than everybody in the county, which happened more than once. So, they're still trying to figure that out. Um, yeah, I understand that there's been questions from the very beginning about whether this system would be, be able to be heard inside the house, especially now that we have all these generators, I shouldn't say all these generators, but a lot of generators kicking, kicking on and off all over the place. I, I really would like to know more about the safe network. Is it, does it work off of internet, or does it work off of cell? I didn't, hm?
Neither.
Neither? Well, I think I'd like, I'd like to hear, I heard Arlene say it was, it was internet. I didn't hear anybody say anything about cell. I'd like to little, know a little more detail on the safe network, on how they get the signal into the house, into the box in the house. You understand it's, you plug it into the wall, and it's battery backup and all that good stuff. Sounds to me like it's wireless of some kind, because they're not running a line to my house, they're not going to put a cable in. So, it sounds like, you know, cell, internet, or there's, there's other techniques that I'm aware of, and I'm just wondering if this is one of those others. I'd like to know a little more technical about how it gets from the pole into the box.
Okay. Any other public comments? See, none? Why don't you come up and just briefly answer how it works again, and then we'll go from there.
The safe network, sir?
Yes.
The safe network uses a proprietary low-frequency RF, so radio frequency, that propagates out from the transmitter itself. Now, to get the signal to those transmitters, it's a multitude of ways. You could do it wirelessly, you could do it via LTE, you could do it through a separate radio, giving the command to it, the fire. You could give it via SatCom, or as in this case for here, what we'd want to do is we'd want to tie it in directly to the same unit that's giving the commands to the towers. So, each gateway itself has a battery backup, it would be tied in to the battery backup in the towers, so that every gateway now is another redundancy added to it. At this time, the individual safe units that go in the houses, we have seen roughly 10 days of standby power on them, so they're fully charged. Power goes out at your house, you have 10 days where they're operating independently on their own battery backup. We have seen an initial testing that you could play probably 10 to 15 messages a day easily, that would probably cut the battery time down to about five days. So, you still have that sign. Now, if you were to, say, evacuate from, and we use Paradise for our original model for it, if you were to evacuate from one end of town to the other, and you take your safe unit with you, it would still operate. Plug it back into a wall if you have power or some way to charge it. If you don't have any charge and the battery's not dead, you can still receive messages. So, it almost is like a little transmitter on the go as well.
Okay. All right.
And that, does that address the number of feet that was, that was talked about, the, the question that Arlene asked about, you know, when you have hills and canyons, the distance that they can?
Same way of our solution, we were saying how if there is a, a gap that is identified in it. So, on flat ground terrain, we're seeing about 7,000 meters is roughly the transmission distance for it. For this terrain, we'd probably cut that in half, so about 3,000 meters. The ideal situation would be we'd put one at every single pole that's existing, any poles that would go in, we could put them at. If we just wanted to put a pole by itself with a gateway in there, we could do that as well, and then just have that as a battery backup. So, it's not a siren pole, but it is a transmission pole for the safe units. It's scalable.
Are they as tall as the?
The gateway by itself, I'm trying to think of dimensions in my head for it. It's about as big as this laptop with roughly the size of this speaker. They're not that big at all.
The, the tower things that you, the, the poles you would be talking?
You could put it on a 10-foot pole if you wanted to, and put the gateway on it with a additional battery cabinet. Solar power, obviously, if you don't have AC going there to recharge the batteries and keep the unit going.
Okay. We're all good?
So, how many of these poles with these transmission units, with the gateway units, would you need to cover the city?
If we looked at what we're doing right now, we would put them on every, on the three poles that are currently here. If there was an identified gap, then we would put a pole for each gap, ideally.
Okay. And, and do you know, based on the fact that you're having it to like 3,500 meters? Okay, and, and do you know, based on the fact that you're having it to like thirty-five hundred meters, I mean, dividing up the city, there would have to be more than the three poles.
When I was in the military, one of the things I did was RF communications. And I can say that if I put a unit on the backside of the ridge going towards the ocean, it would probably get the backside and the top of the ridge. It would not shoot all the way over down to where we are right now. So my next thing would be, okay, I'm probably going to put a gateway at the pole down here, or at Crest Ridge, to kind of bounce the signal along.
Are they act like repeaters?
No, they don't. It's not a mesh network where they just bounce it from one gateway to the other. And each gateway is putting out the signal independently of all the other ones.
Okay, so they, they can't, well, like amplify it like you can piggyback from each other?
No, that, that would be a mesh, a mesh network, ma'am, where they just like pass a command on from one to the other.
Okay, all right.
All right.
I don't know if this will help, but, uh, thirty-five hundred meters, if I look it up, is two point one seven miles, and just, the city is three square miles, so just in case that helps.
It's two point seven from end to end, that direction.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, just to share, you know, in case people are trying to think about it in terms of space.
Okay, then I'm going to close public hearing. Thank you very much, thanks for not giving up, thanks for keep going at it. We understand this is, it's been a painful process for us. It took a long time to get here, it's a painful process for you guys as well. We appreciate you guys keep going at it, and we'll get it solved.
I could say one thing, sir, it's, it's, we're not trying to give up and walk away. This isn't a money-making thing on it. We have identified issues, and to us, we know people's lives are at stake. I personally, I know Kice does too. We treat it as if our families are living in these places that we're putting them in, and we would not want to leave our families in a situation. So we have never have an intention of doing that to our customers.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much, thanks for staying. Okay? All right, oh, you don't, you don't have to stay here, man.
Spend the night.
For the item, yeah.
Mayor Piper? Escape when you have time. Receive and file, or provide any direction to staff?
For the recommendation?
Right. Someone make a motion to receive and file?
Who to receive and file?
All favor? Okay. All right.
Right, so which one make, go ahead. We need the city council to provide direction on implementation of safe network system add-on and standard operation procedures. The SOP, we're going to keep working with the ad hoc, because it's going to, it's a living document, so we want to continue working on that, but we need to know if, um, we'd like us to continue to working with them to kind of explore the safe network system.
Uh, yes. Right?
Yes, okay.
Why wouldn't we?
Well, yes, but not as a standalone, I mean, maybe.
Not as a separate?
But not, not as a separate thing to make the, the whole thing work. That's a separate thing. We're still committed to trying to get base, Plan One, Plan A.
Which is a pole.
Yeah, so we're, we're going to, we're going to get it so that we meet the requirements that was agreed upon. That's with poles, whatever the heck that happens. Then we can add on this other piece, which they have agreed to do, because me, because I could hear the poles kind of through my windows, but there's no way I'm not spending ninety bucks to stick one of these things in my house, just in case. Maybe I'll put two in there, I don't know. But to me, the, the dollars we're talking about are for per resident. Even, I mean, I'm assuming the residents are paying. It's totally worth doing that between all these different things, even if the thing in your house just made a noise, so that I went outside and I could hear it, or just woke me up. I think it's all a good thing. So I, I mean, I'm honestly happier today with what you're describing than I was earlier, before I knew what you're talking about, so. Thank you for the effort.
We have direction, thank you.
But make sure we get it so we can fire that thing off, because he shouldn't have to stay up at night for us.
But we already do.
No, he, he has to help.
No, but I thought, I mean, I thought that you and I talked, that you can just push the button.
No, so that's what it was, what he was saying. I have the authorization to give him the other reason to push the button.
I thought that you could push the button personally.
No, I make the call, so I'm the one that will make the call, if we need to set the siren today. I'm the one that's authorized to make that call on behalf of the city.
I know.
And then...
To, uh, Councilmember Black's point, we are getting trained on the software, and we're not fully there. We've only had one training session to be able to do that in the future.
The goal is to fire it off, even in the condition it's in, without having to do two steps.
And I want it so we don't have to rely on them, so we need to, we can't get a hold of them.
But that's right, that's what they're working on.
He was up at midnight, which I appreciate, but I don't want him to have to go.
Yeah, and, and there should be, I'm just asking, a question, a way in which we could have the, um, emergency operations commander be able to have it, if for some reason, people need to evacuate now, that it can be issued from the command post to. But not, without going through Karina and, or going through anybody else.
Well, is that the same guy who sends off the things to my cellphone? That guy?
I saw the mayor's not on it, the mayor should be on it, I have friends on it, and he should have some people.
Oh, Piper will be on it.
That, that would be the ordeal, like, to save lives if it needs to be done immediately.
Fire chief should be able to be on it.
Yep, okay.
Yes to all that. All right, moving on, fourteen A. Uh, consideration of submitting a letter of support for appointing the former RPV mayor and councilmaner. Do you have to use the word honorable in front of John Kirkshank's name? You do not, Mr. Mayor, you do not. No, perfect. West Basin Water District to fill the vacancy. Leah?
Uh, Mayor Piper and members of the city council. Um, the item before you was presented to, um, Councilwoman Mersch um, on behalf of former councilmember John Kirkshank of Rancho Paulos Verdes, on his request to be appointed, um, as the next West Basin Municipal Water District to fill vacancy that just became available. Now, the reason why we're bringing this before the city council is that, um, in this particular case, the city council can authorize, um, staff to work directly with, uh, Councilwoman Mersch on this as, um, as a whole, as a body, or allowing Councilwoman Mersch to be the one to make the decision on her own, and, um, as a standalone. And this, I've, from previous experience here, um, this is very new to us. We wanted to bring it before the city council, and I will pass it on to Councilwoman Mersch. I know she had conversations with, um, John Kirkshank in regards to this. And just to let you know, uh, Paulos Verdes Estates, Rancho Paulos Verdes will also be putting this on their agenda. And, um, Rolling Hills Estates does not make individual, um, recommendations. Sorry, they do not make recommendations on the, as a council, but rather individual, and councilmembers can write a letter on behalf of themselves, not the council.
Thank you. So I didn't really have a conversation with John, Honorable John. He, he just sent an email asking if the city would consider doing it. If the city does not want to do it, if the council doesn't want to do it as a whole, you know, I personally would do it. I think John has demonstrated both as the council member, the mayor, and the head of the, is he the president, was that his title, be of the COG?
He was the chair.
Yeah, chair. He's demonstrated that he's a dedicated, effective pub, public servant with high ethical standards. He's solution-driven, he's, he understands the issues that are out there. His background, and his professional background, being an engineer, all the work that he's done. He understands the complex issues. I think that his, um, uh, and his act, his activities on the COG, would make him a valuable and effective director for the district. And so when he, his ask was if the council, if the city, if the council would do it as a whole, I told him I would bring it up. I think he would be a great candidate, be somebody that we at least know on the council. I think he understands these types of issues more than a lot of people that could go there.
But that was my question, because, you know, you're voting on giant amounts of money and expenditure, and they have no idea what they're voting on. My question, does he, as a, on the board, would he get, does he get paid for that?
I don't know if it's a paid position or not.
It is, I was wondering, and how much? Because it should be, I don't know.
Paid a stipend per meeting.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a hundred and fifty bucks per meeting stipend.
Uh, it's, 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 it's different than, uh, than say, like, when you go to city sanitation, but, but their, they, their model is based on per meeting, and I don't know what that, um, stipend is.
Nobody knows.
I have it right here. It's each director is authorized to be reading exactly what the, what the, what the resolution says.
The most, it would be three thousand bucks a month.
He's making forty grand a year if he went to every meeting. Forty grand a year for every meeting.
And I know Honorable John, um, well enough to know that he would be one person that I know would not just be passing, spending money on things he knows nothing about. I believe he would look and find out if it's the right, you know, the right thing, or at least know as much as he...
Usually just approve whatever staff hands them, they say.
Yeah, that, and that's not John. That's not John. He's a, he's a fighter when he was running for elected, uh, for, you know, council, for the board supervisors and so forth. He had, he got wonky in getting into the issues of how money was being spent. I believe he would do that here as well, and I think he would, it's at least somebody I know.
What do you want us to do?
I have to, I wanted to, to, to provide some input. I, I think, you know, it has nothing to do with John, John's a great guy. The question, I think, is, are we as a council going to be involved in doing recommendations and sending letters of support in these kinds of situations? Because if we do it for John, there's going to be people asking us for similar thing. And, and at this point, with a, um, appointment, we don't know who else is applying. It's not like when somebody files for office, you have to file a statement, it's all public record, and you know. So I think it's important, I, I know I did talk to our city attorney Donigan to see, do we have any, um, cities that you know that actually do this? He wasn't aware of any that actually take that stance. Uh, and I know that, um, Rolling Hills Estates, they don't take a position as a council. They allow individual councilmembers to make recommendations. And I think that's probably a good policy, because in a sense, then it puts more work on our staff, because they're going to have to get information, well, who else is in the running? And what are the qualifications of these people? If we're going to make a, a intelligent decision, and that's just more work than they need to do for something like this.
I, I can appreciate that. Be, um, this goes back to the very issue that we talk about, when we want to support legislation or not support it, and we go, gee, are we going to send letters or not send letters? It goes back to that. I wasn't asking staff to do any other work, check out other candidates for it, because I don't even think that we're, I don't even know if we're privy to know who applies for these things. I don't know. I thought this was an unusual circumstance, in that this is somebody we know. I don't know possibly all the other people, and in my little draft thing that I had, I never said he was the best candidate. I thought that he would be a valuable person there. So if the, if the council decide, I under, your point is very well taken. I feel that same way about all, but many of the legislative issues that we have taken positions on. I, I can appreciate that. And I, my feelings would not be hurt if we didn't decide to do it as a council. I respect your opinion on that. I just thought that this was, you don't very often get a chance to get somebody on a board like, or on a, um, district like that, where we don't even know the people. First of all, he's from the South Bay. Most of the people in that district are not even from the South Bay. I think he has our, um, our interest at heart. But anyway, I, I, you know, I understand where you're coming from. But I was not in any way asking staff to do any research, or, you know, look at the other candidates or anything like that.
So, um, this is an, it is an unusual circumstance that we're being asked to recommend a candidate for a position in a special district that has a resignation. So this doesn't come up every day. It comes up a lot less frequency than, uh, the legislation we're asked to weigh in on. So I don't think, I wouldn't worry too much about if, if we do it for him, we have to do it for everybody else, because everybody else is, I think, it's the first time, I think, we've been asked to consider recommending a candidate for a special district due to resignation since I've been on council in ten years now, so. That's, that's my comment about that. There is another candidate that I'm, that I'm aware of that's, um, running or being considered for this position, and it's Jim Dear. He's a councilmember from Carson, if you, uh, might know who he is. So that's another name that I understand is, um, has put his name in the hat. I don't know if there's others, that's the only one that I know, that I know of. So, um, I just want to give some background on that. And, and by the way, the comments that were made about John that, that you made just now, they're absolutely spot on. You know, in addition to his elected service, and, you know, I, I coached Little League with him twenty-five years ago. So I've known him for a really long time, um, and I, I can speak to his character outside of his elected, um, office position.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Oh, no, yeah. Hey, I'm going to open a public comment, anyone has a public comment? See, none, we're going to close public comment.
And, and I just want to say one thing in response. I think Leah is a different, um, scenario for, we're asked to endorse a person, and particularly a person for an appointment when we, I mean, Pat knows something than a issue. I think issues are perfectly appropriate for cities, and they regularly do make statements about that, because it will affect the city.
I received for that. I wasn't saying that they were the same, I'm saying it's the type of, it's the type of issue that we face, and I brought it up before myself. You know, are we going to start doing it on all of them? So I, I appreciate.
Okay, so let's, let's do it this way, is, I mean, me, me personally, I feel like we should never be doing this. As, I mean, in general, I think we should avoid all these things. And they always come in and ask us to have a thing about this, and a thing about that, and I prefer not to be involved in any of that, just because I don't feel like it's the best thing for the city. So this is kind of where I want to do this. If everyone wants to do this, then we'll do one from the city for this scenario. If you don't want to do it, then Leah's going to write one, and I'm going to stick my name on the bottom of Leah's, as with Leah, because I've known John, I went to college with John.
Can I sign it as a council, can I say?
Correct, you, you can always correctly identify yourself. Of course, the re-
Just not on letterhead.
And then to also, the, and once again, I won't get into the substance of the letter and where the discussions may go, there would be a problem if you said on behalf of the city council, et cetera, et cetera, without the direction of your colleagues.
Okay, so let's do it this way. Pat, do you want to do this, or no?
As a, uh, as a council?
Do you want to do it?
Yes.
Okay, I know you do, I'm okay with it.
I, I actually, I want to do it separate from the city, so us signing on to Leah's thing, like.
Yeah, which is totally a valid way.
Visual.
Yeah.
But not as a city, is that what the thought we're talking about right now?
That's a perfect thought.
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I just don't think we should do it as a city.
Okay, so then let's do this, is, we're not going to do it as a city. Leah, can I, so are you okay tagging on to Leah? Leah, are you okay if we tag on to yours?
Tag along, tag along.
Okay, so I'm okay doing it, Pat's okay, whatever, Jim, are you okay? You, so we're going to do it without it being on the city letterhead, basically.
Right.
Okay.
So it's not an action item, so we, I guess we have to vote on this.
No, we don't, we don't have to be like.
No? Okay.
They're free, and once again, not using city letterhead. If you guys want to sign your name to a letter, petition, any other exercise, if you're First Amendment, you're free to do so.
First Amendment. Okay, so we're done with this?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, now we get to receive and file the fire code enforcement quarterly report for the fourth quarter.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor Piper and members of the city council. The item before you is a update, the fourth quarter update for 2024 on code enforcement and the fire fuel abatement. Briefly, on the code enforcement side, um, code enforcement is working on a total of eleven, eleven open cases, specifically to that deal with overgrown vegetation or dread trees. The reports that I attached, you may notice I slightly modified them. I indicated each, um, case as their case number, and I removed the addresses. But it is at the pleasure of the city council, if you'd like for me to put it back, I'd be willing to have to do so. I just did it to just be mindful of, um, privacy and confidentiality.
I want their addresses.
Wonderful, okay, I will. It's, it's okay. I thought I'd take a different approach.
It's publicly available, right?
Was just be my hope, but I'll bring it back, see what happens when I take.
This is a small city, if we could put stocks out in the...
No, we're not doing that.
You haven't done this, we're together.
Not putting wanted posters up either.
In any case, um, okay, so noted, noted, it's coming back. I will put them on, but in any case, um, I have been, myself, along with our system planner, Stephanie, has been working closely with our code enforcement officer on really addressing these cases and, um, identi- identifying those that need to be remedied quickly. I do want to add that in, in the beginning of the meeting, I believe there was a resident who had a... who had asked for information regards to, um, seventy nine, seventy nine, uh, Eastfield. And I can provide a quick status update. As of, um, this past Friday, we received a notification from the ci- city attorney's office, so it's hot off the press, that, um, a stipulation with the opposing councils was reached to appoint a receiver. This was filed on January eighth. And the order appointing the receiver was received on January 24th, so just this past week. So there is an individual, um, from the, it's from the receiver's office that had been appointed and has requested a property inspection, uh, this week or the following week. So I'm working closely with the city attorney's office and our code enforcement officer to schedule that property inspection. No warrant is required for this inspection as the receiver has court authority and possession of the property. So how does this work? The inspection details will require the receiver, um, to meet with all the, myself and, um, the city attorney's office to attend the inspection. And, uh, the purpose of that is to survey and document the work of the receiver to draft motions and seek court approval for funding. Now, what happens next after all this occurs? I feel like everyone's wondering. It's been really a long time. Well, um, they're going to be required to remove the incomplete structure and the concrete slab. Um, they'll place the, the land on the market, correct, for, um, investors? And, um, the receiver will work with the court to approve a sale. So I do have city attorney Donigan here if he wants to add to that. I know this was mentioned today. We were just informed about this, this past Thursday, so please feel free to fill in the gaps.
Right, the one thing that I will add is that the part of this process, the city's legal fees, of course, will attach to the property, um, as a lien.
Thank you. Sorry, forgot to mention that.
Well, they're going to sell the property?
No, but the, right, the, and so that'll be recorded, so any potential buyer, investor will be clear of the cost. And there's court costs related to it.
Are we in front of the bank? Are we in first position or is the bank in front of us?
Current mortgage would still that, but, but it doesn't, it's not like the, it, it won't be extinguished. That the, the receivership will remain on title, even if it goes into foreclosure.
That's what I'm saying. Is they cleared, they cleared the property, all that cost gets put on the thing.
Right.
Then when they sell it, let's say they're in $2 million on the debt and they sell it for a million bucks, then the first million goes to us and cleaning the property and then the bank?
What's it if we have first priority on that?
Yeah. I could probably, I don't know how much longer your report is going to be. I can probably get that answer in the next four or five minutes.
But would the loan be extinguished upon the sale or would the new buyer assume that debt?
Can't speak intelligently on the, on the, on the function of the mortgage. Right.
They should be, I was going to say the wrong word. They were, they should be sticking it to the, um, the mortgage guys. So they, they're going to lose it all. It's just the question is, are we behind them or in front of them? I bet we're in front of them.
I don't know how to answer, but I think the city attorney is looking into that. So in the meantime, while he's Googling, just kidding, whoever he's reaching out to, um, the, the code enforcement component for this one, um, I hope that answers at least some, some curiosity for seventy nine Eastfield.
So I'm curious about, I understand removing the structure, but I'm a little curious about the slab.
I thought the same thing.
The reason, why does the slab have to be removed? I mean, it might be the, the foundation for the next-
They've got approved building with a slab. I would imagine I might just build the same building right on the slab.
Correct. So, and once again, I can't speak specifically to this. Typically, a receiver will analyze that. Now, the one bad thing is that the receiver often will not sign off on work that he or she wasn't intimately familiar with. And so, once again, I can't speak authoritatively. The, I, I have seen it been done before. But typically they say, hey, even if it's, can save the future owner a couple hundred grand, they're not going to say, yes, we, we warrant that this is in good condition and you can go ahead and use it.
So we're hoping to, um, meet with, um, the receiver, um, the code enforcement officer, myself and the VBK senior prosecution counsel to set a date to go and inspect the property and present what it probably looks like to the receiver.
When you get past that, could you send the shortest email in the world that says, hey, this is what's going to happen with some dates? People ask me that time all the time about this thing. And, because it'd be nice to have it, you know, I realize, was it three years now?
Yeah, this case was open.
Longer?
Um, I have here that the case was open on July 13th, 2020.
Five years.
Gosh, sorry. I don't have the right date. Sorry, I don't have the date, the exact date.
Who crushed that?
I don't have it accurate. Okay, so I can move on to the fire, fire fuel conversation if you don't mind. I don't know if you wanted to add anything. Okay, so we're continuing to look. So the quarterly fire fuel meeting, um, due to the holidays and the departure of the recent director, um, set the meeting back. So we're actually hosting the meeting this month, um, in January with staff, with Sam Crew taking lead on, um, the fire fuel abatement meetings. However, um, we will come back as soon as we have a status update outside of this, um, to just provide you information that we have at that time. But there is a second component to this staff report that I wanted to bring to your attention in discussing fire fuel abatement. And, um, in the past, there was a ad hoc committee that was put together to review and consider discussions about fire fuel. And with all that has been occurring, um, around us about fire, staff wanted to seek direction from city council if it would be of interest to bring back this ad hoc committee. Um, formerly it was with, uh, council members, deranger and merch serving as, um, liaisons. And if it would be of interest to-
No, that's not accurate.
It was-
I sat here with that with mercy.
We're talking about the ad hoc, not the standing committee. You know, remember you were the standing committee, which had all the-
Public.
Yes. So the standing committee. Go ahead.
The committee that B and I were on is, was an ad hoc and it was to try and determine what progress we have been making in removal of fire fuels since we discontinued, we were unsuccessful in our attempts, um, on our committee. And B and I met, did a report out. We haven't met again because we had many, we had no way of being able to quantify how much, I mean, anecdotally, you can look and see, gee, I see somebody's done something, but unless you're down in the canyons, you can't see it, number one. And yes, we have the bins and I can see all the green waste that's going in there. I have no idea whether that's coming from the canyons or around somebody's house or whatever. People don't want to self-report because they're afraid if they self-report that, some of the things I hear are amazing. If they self-report that they did something and we don't think they did enough, that we're going to come back to them and say, you need to do more. I mean, people are just, so if there wasn't any self-reporting that we were able to do that, there had been discussion about doing some type of a program office where people could call into the city and, you know, report what they've done. But we haven't had the program office and those parameters haven't really been decided. So B and I have not reported back out on that. So that's the committee that is tentatively scheduled, that is ad hoc right now. So if you were to charge that committee with doing something, it would be a specific thing. It's an ad hoc, not a standing. So you'd need to, is that, so that's correct?
That's correct.
Do those get then noticed to the public? Can you have the big crowds, just like you did at the standing? Or is it a little different?
They don't have to be.
No, you can choose to.
I would choose to do so on something like this. I would choose to do so. This is a community issue and I think that we would need to do it. But B and I can speak more than you and I together, much more than you and I can, you know, I would come trotting in with something and I hadn't had a chance to talk with Jim to hear whether or not he was going to, yeah, I think that's a good idea or not. So we were, um, so that, that's, that's the difference between the two, Jim.
And that's why staff is bringing it back to city council for your consideration if, if you would like to and are interested in bringing back the ad hoc committee. And we can come back at another council meeting and kind of work with, if the ad hoc committee members would like to remain on the ad hoc, we can work with them on what the parameters would look like and, um, discuss what potentially the project would be covering. Um, but that's where I would leave it to city council. If you would like to do that, just provide us direction and we can continue to continue, work with you. And Sam will be the liaison assigned to the, um, yeah.
If the council is willing to consider doing this, um, I would hate to see, have two things. I'd hate to see a year's worth of work go, get wasted. I would suggest that I be allowed to try and do a brief summary of what Jim and I did, what we learned from that, the standard clear of those labs. Let that be shared with Sam and her brought up to speed. The next issue is whether or not I would be the right person to serve on this ad hoc committee or not. Um, I have the passion for it. I would like to do it, but I was unsuccessful previously. And maybe a new face on the committee might help. So if the council chose to appoint somebody else instead of me, I would, I would understand that. But I would like to be allowed to provide a synopsis of what happened and so that that all doesn't go, um, it was a year's worth of work, 17 meetings. Um, I'd hate to see it go to waste.
I, I would, the only way I'd even benefit even in ad hoc is if, one, I mean, the council, when it ultimately comes, the council has to be somehow involved because it's not fair for two people to have to take the hit. So if there's a vote or anything, the council has to be involved instead of the two people being insulted. And then number two, I don't want to waste council members' time. I mean, we wasted so much time and effort. And then ultimately, the resistance was shocking. So I, I don't know why we think it's going to be different now because we say, oh, there's a fire now. Well, there was a fire then too.
I, I think the difference might be is there are more people calling for it now than there were before. When we had the meetings, Jim, as you know, it, there were more people that showed up at the meetings. There were people out in the community, but the issue was, you got, when you get right down to it, was whether you were going to do everything voluntarily or whether you were going to have it mandatory. And then the, the financial aspect of it. And when you say the, the council, I'm not, I don't need the council to take the hits. I can take the hits and B and I can take the hits. What I can't, what I think is a problem is if I don't have the support of council on the issue, I'm kind of hitting my head against our, our communal heads against the wall.
Being accused of trying to clear cut people's places so that other people's views. Being accused of trying to drive elderly people out of the city by forcing these expensive clearing things, like I'm just trying to force old people out of the city was shocking.
It was, it was terrible. But the, the council, I think, needs to think about whether or not they feel differently now than perhaps they did before all these fires. Since then, we've had, so we had Paradise then. But since then, we've had, you know, a couple of Malibu's. We've had, um, you know, we've had what, what we've got, right, you know, what we've just had. So maybe the council feels differently about it.
Okay, so can we do this is not at the next meeting, but the meeting after, which is the February 24th?
What about it? Why do you want to do something?
No, no, but February 24th.
And then public comment before we get to anything.
Yeah, hang on. Is, what I'm saying is on the February 24th, if Leah's willing to put together kind of a summary of where we ended up and what happened and kind of get us all up to the same page. So if we could do that, so she comes and she'll explain where, where we went, what we were talking about, kind of a summary of what that is, just to get everybody on the same page. And then at that meeting, we can discuss who, if we're doing this, who is going to be on it? Because honestly, I have been floored with what, between when this thing started over a couple of weeks, talking to people who have zero complaint on how much it's going to cost. They have plenty of money, plenty of everything on how not my trees, not my this. You start with this person's, I can't believe you're even talking about this. It has been amazing.
I don't understand what you're trying to say.
I'm saying is-
You're saying resistance.
The resistance was crazy.
Oh, it was resistance too.
Crazy. I couldn't believe this, like what's going on. So do I think someone's going to take a hit or whatever that is? I personally, I can't even believe that we can't make something happen. That, because everyone should want this to happen, right? And, and so we should have a conversation at that point on who would, who's going to be on it or what that looks like, or how do we break it up into chunks? And then do something that is maybe not a whole giant big picture, but we do something that is achievable. Because I talked to HWA, they did a thing where they were going to pay, I think, half of any tree in the roadside easements, you know, those big yukes to take them down. Not a single person took them up on it, right? And they're all over the place. I mean, it just goes on and on and on about this thing. And when I brought up like, hey, why don't you just chop down one, every other eucalyptus tree? Or just clean them up. Oh, God, you should start with the bottom of the canyon. Okay, then let's start at the bottom of the canyon. You mean like in the blue line streams? Where do you, where do you want to start these things? It was amazing. So I think in two, two weeks, or I'm sorry, four weeks from now, let's do a summary of what that is and then we'll decide who wants to do it or not want to do it at that point in time and we'll figure out what the next steps are at that point.
I'm trying to understand. Are you saying people are more willing to-
No, they were not willing at all to do any, zero.
Okay. I know, I'm just trying to think like, oh, but you're-
It, it was the most, I, I could not believe I was having these conversations. And, and people were, these are like my good friends were aggressively insulted by the concept. And I was like-
I had, I had lots of good friends like that.
And I'm like, and so I was like, I was like, all right.
I understand aggressively insulting. I understand that.
So, so it is what it is and we'll, we'll get there. But I think that'd be a good idea to get everyone back up to what we were talking about and then we can decide together where we go next. All right? I'm going to open this public comment. Fred, why don't you come on up?
Did, did you want me to answer the question on receivership first?
Uh, yeah. I mean, it's, wait, wait.
Well, I'm glad to hear that we're going to put names back on the, uh, wanted list here.
Sorry.
Can we get that updated and out?
Yeah.
Uh, so I can get it, you know, put it, put it someplace where I can zoom in and get it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll upload it. Thank you.
All right, you know where I stand and where I've stood for seven years now. There's always going to be thousands of reasons not to do this. Always going to be thousands of arguments not to do this. I always felt that, as far as the canyon clearance is concerned, I always felt that it was unfair to put the cost on the poor souls that happen to own part of the canyon because that would be, um, for the benefit of the entire community. Okay? So I always felt that there should be some way to help fund that part of the clearance. I don't know anything about Rolling Hills Association trying to agreeing to pay for 50% of the removal of eucalyptus tree, you know, in a road easement. And I've attended every meeting forever on that.
Could have misunderstood when they said that. That's my understanding of what it was.
I never heard anything like that. Okay? I mean, that would be a great idea. Maybe, maybe people have brought that up. I think I brought up, why not do it like, like you do the undergrounding, one third, one third, one third, you know? The city kicking a third and the association kicking a third and the popular kicking a third. But it, it never went that, it never went anywhere. So I don't know where the association's going on the road easements. That they're going to bite the bullet and just do it, because they certainly have the authority to do it. It's a question of they have the will and a question of how much. Okay? Once you get past the road easements, it's been my concern about trees that were big enough. And I'm only, I'm, I'm talking about the high flammable trees, okay? I'm not talking about oaks. I'm not talking about elms. What I'm concerned about is the highly flammable trees along the road easements that are tall enough that if they fall over or drop huge limbs on them, that, that would block the road. Okay? So personally, I think it's, I think you should simply order the association to take care of the road easements and be done with it. And let them figure out how to do it and how to pay for it and how they want to, and tell them that you want it done within X- for it, and how they want to, and tell them that you want it done within X period of time. And then the ones outside the road easements that are tall and could fall over, that's unfortunately, for most of the city, the association doesn't have that jurisdiction. They do have it under Declaration 150 in the companion declaration. But for a lot of the other declarations, they don't have that authority. You get an argument over that, but I think that's what the Cogier litigation proved. So that's your, that's your game. That's your ballpark, okay? I would think, there's any more committee, many, no, enough, enough of that. You know what has to be done. You know what, you know what's right. You're going to get heat. You're going to get heat from some people who want you to do it quicker, and they want you to pay for it. And you're going to get heat from other people who don't want you to do it at all, okay? Be leaders. Don't be followers. Don't be intimidated. Don't listen to the crazies, okay? You know what has to be done. You've taken the first step, which says, we're not going to allow any of the highly flammable vegetation that's on the ready. You said go list to be planted again in this city. Take the next step. Get rid of all the highly flammable litigation, vegetation, no matter where it's located, with a procedure that if it's such, like, if it's down in the canyon, that you can come in and the property owner can say it's not feasible to do that, okay? Give them a procedure for that, to check that. We have to get rid of this highly flammable. That doesn't say you can't plant something else. You take out your highly flammable, and it doesn't, isn't going to fall on the road, plant an oak. Plant an elm. You want some trees? Fine. But not yuks, not pine, not fir, not palm trees, not pampas grass, not acacia. You want to plant, take them out and plant something else. There's no reason to do any more studies. We know what the issue is. You know. Now, I would hope that there would be a way to help fund that, even if it's not in the canyons. Something like, if you do it within, you know, six months or a year, we'll compensate you, pay for twenty-five percent or fifty percent of the cost of doing that. And I believe that if you set up, under our gifting program, if you set up a fund for wildfire mitigation, you'd be, I think you'd be surprised that there'll be some people, a lot of people, that'd be willing to contribute to that, especially when you advise them that, hey, this could be a tax write-off. Or the, if you take it directly out of your IRA, it would be something that won't even have to be reported, if you have to take minimum distributions anyway. There are enough wealthy people in this city who would recognize that doing this, even though it might not be on their property, maybe they've already taken care of it, but to help fund doing it on others' properties would be to their benefit, obviously. I'm surprised that the people that were at the last association meeting weren't here. I forget what street it was, maybe.
They came last week, last week.
They came. They came to the previous meeting.
Oh, the previous meeting, okay. I slept through that one, I guess. Maybe I wasn't here. I don't know. You don't really need to do any more studies. You know what has to be done. What killed the, going further into the canyons, was the fear that we'd have to get fish and game, fish and wildlife approval. Well, my understanding, and I think that was confirmed by discussions recently I had, is that if you don't get within fifty feet of the, of the bottom of the canyon, fish and wildlife, county doesn't care, and the fish and wildlife people aren't even notified. You could, if you want to, but they only are concerned about the fifty foot at the, at the bottom of the, of the canyons. That's when fish and wildlife gets excited. And there is, in your own file, there's a situation on where they did go to fish and wildlife, because the county said, hey, you have to mitigate the fire rates at the bottom of the canyon. They went to fish and wildlife. Fish and wildlife sends them a letter, says, well, if you don't, if you don't respond within thirty days, it's deemed approved. Well, they didn't respond. And so another letter goes out and says, we deem it approved, but you can only do what you submitted to us. And that's in your own file, and I have copies of it. So, you know, more committees, more meetings, more trying to figure out what to do, you know. Another, two things that you could do, that I don't think would be as controversial, maybe I'm wrong. One, get rid of fire pits. No more fire pits, no more open flames, and figure out a way to get rid of them, to phase them out, take them out of the city. The other thing is, this, whatever shake roofs are still in this city, hopefully not many, they should be replaced. And that can also be part of the funding by the gifting program, for those people who, who maybe can't do it. If you do it by the end of the year, we'll pay twenty-five or fifty percent of the cost. No shake, no more shake roofs, no more open flames, like fire pits. Outdoor, outdoor fire pits, outdoor, you know, things. No more open flames. So get rid of the flammable, flammable vegetation, get rid of the fire pits, no more, get, phase them out, get rid of the shake roofs. If you do that, you've probably solved the problem. And of course, no more divestation, which you already have. You already had that, thank you.
All right, thank you. Come on up, come on up.
Hi, Marion Visco. I'm dismayed, Jeff, that you have those kind of friends who don't care about the city, because I would think that anybody with any sense of concern or anything, just, I can't see why they're actually having that kind of attitude. Because, you know, just take, for example, the people in Wagon Lane and what they're doing. And I know somebody in Quail Ridge who's taken out trees. And so, we have to try to do what we can. There's always going to be people who are not willing to do, but this is probably the best time, if ever, of trying to get at least some kind of an interest in really getting, taking care of all the, all the trees that are a problem, especially pine trees. We don't allow new pine tree planting, but what's happening is that the pine cones fall, and there's new pine trees that happen. So pine trees really should be taken out completely, so we don't propagate them anymore. And then put on, you know, kind of trees which are not, you know, oaks or whatever kind are not so flammable. So, you know, that's one way of doing it. The other thing, of course, is we have to be really serious about looking at the dead vegetation. Like, for example, for months, we had one of the lots that had tumbleweed there for, for literally months before they actually were able to clear it. So there's got to be some kind of a more aggressive looking by the city, I don't know who's doing your code enforcement now, about getting rid of that dead vegetation. So this is an, this is an important facet, too, of, you know, of the, trying to mitigate the new fire areas. And as you mentioned, making a rule that all, that, like Fred had mentioned, making sure everybody's got a good Class A roof, and all the other types of things of clearance. And being aggressive, too, with the fire department, that they actually do a good inspection, which they really did a rather lousy inspection that they did last year. I've talked to Chief Kane, and he promises that it will be done, but really, we need to get the city council to really get a, you know, you guys have more authority than we do, to ask them to really do good inspections of the properties when they do it this year. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to say that just this week, I had two people call me about clearing stuff, just to go on the record. I don't know if they got hold of you, Samantha, somebody on Chuck Wagon, about the Willow Canyon, the canyon. So the association cleared the top part, but said they can't clear where there's private property. So that's, I know that's the issue, is the private property. And then on Wagon Lane, they, the whole street got together and decided what they were going to do to mitigate their issue with their vegetation and stuff. And then I was taking a walk, two days ago, I took pictures just on my, just my block of Eastfield, of all these huge eucalyptus trees. I mean, they're just so tall and so unmaintained. And that's exactly what the fire chief, when I was up there last week, I had talked to him about it, and he said it's the palm, palm trees and the eucalyptus. And we're getting undergrounded, so I'm kind of surprised that they're not removing some of the, the eucalyptus trees. Plus, I was told that the association made me push my bushes back eight feet, and up and down my street, there's eucalyptus trees that are, you know, closer to the street than my eight feet. So sometimes it's not fair that some people have to do it and other people don't. I mean, I do stuff because I'm a block captain, and I want to make a good, you know, appearance to other people about doing stuff. But I agree with the Viscos that this time, after all of these fires, that, you know, maybe people will pay attention a little bit better. So if you're going to bring this committee back, now is about the best time, or ad hoc, whatever you're going to do, is probably about the best time to do it. So, I mean, when there's fire storms, there's not a whole lot you can do, but at least we can try. So, so, along with our sirens and everything else, I mean, what else can we do? So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. All right, so, did we receive and file?
From what I heard, you would like to come back with Councilwoman Mersch to provide a summary, and that will be on, yeah, the February twenty-fourth city council meeting.
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor. Have a motion.
The motion to receive and file, then.
All favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, now we're going to get a, receive a verbal update on the status of the campus backup generator.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Considering that we are talking about a lot of emergency issues here, I think the mayor had requested that we bring back a verbal update on where we're at with this process for the dual-fuel generator. S and K this weekend provided their final engineering design. Mr. Palermo and myself reviewed that today, sent back our comments with some requests for changes on those documents. The timeline, as it looks right now, and this is coming from S and K, and so I think some of this will be amenable, but once they have those final plans with our changes incorporated, the city and utility provide a review. They assume about a one-to-two week additional period. They're saying plan check submittal three to eight months with county fire included, and three to six weeks without. Staff believes that with our relationship with county fire at the inspection level, that we can actually get that expedited quite a bit faster. We've been working with them with our residents in the affected areas. The, the plan has to go to review both to Will Dan as a result of the shed and part of the parking lot being in Rolling Hills Estates, and we share, you know, with them. And then part of the project clearly is under Rolling Hills. So I did speak with the Will Dan reviewer today, and also requested that when this comes before them, through Rolling Hills Estates, that they also expedite that for us. And then, of course, we've been working closely with Mike Dora at L.A. County, and would request the same of him as well. With that said, once we get through the plan check process and all the permitted approvals, then we can finally go out to bid. And so I would anticipate, based on this, that hopefully within the next four to six weeks, you know, if we can get the expedited turnarounds, that we would be out to bid at that point. Any questions? Happy to answer.
I want to know why everybody who had to get solar power and generator backups and everything were getting it within a month. And I realize it's because we're the government, but...
Shocking.
Absolutely.
And in fairness, it's the state rules that spill down to the L.A. County rules, because if it was up to us, we wouldn't have all this craziness. It would go faster. Because it's not on you guys. Don't ever, when I'm complaining, I'm not complaining about you guys. But the insanity of the state we live in.
The insanity.
I mean, yeah.
We will maximize our...
I appreciate that. But we should figure out is, how do, if, if you, we can maximize for us, and we can maximize for the flying triangle, to get that stuff done is, how do we get it so the, the property that just we had here, is, they've been in between planning and us and back and forth, it's been two years. That's ridiculous.
Well, and in all fairness, a lot of this taking time to get our generator here was our fault. We, you know...
A hundred percent. We have no money.
No, no, no. We messed around with, yes, we, first we're going to go this way, then we're going to go that way. So some of the, so some of the onus is on us.
I'll take the one.
And we skipped over the other matters from other city council members. So I just wanted to...
Hang on, hang on, hang on. We need public comment and... Correct, yeah. And then, and we can just get to the other matters after. Sorry.
All right. Any, I want to open public comment. Any public comment?
Question? Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
So if an emergency happened...
Come on, come on up, come on up, come on up.
Using candles.
If an emergency happened tomorrow, do we not have backup power for here?
Nope.
Yes, we do not.
And the association? Both buildings?
Both buildings.
Are you shaking your head, Ken?
Yes.
Nothing?
We have nothing.
Zero.
So we'd all have to go to your houses that have the backup generators?
Okay, all right.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks for coming. All right, close the public hearing. Yes, B.
Okay, just one...
Hold on, we got to, so I make a motion, someone has to make a motion, receive and file? Proceed.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, now B's going to go, ah, okay.
So earlier today, Council, sorry, Mayor Pretem Derringer provided a letter that she submitted in your blue, as a blue folder item. It was also emailed to you. Sorry, it kind of bounced back, so I resent it again. You may have gotten it twice. I apologize. But it's a status update from Mayor Pretem Derringer on an item, and I will pass it on to her.
Yes, just real briefly. So we went to my Public Safety Policy Committee meeting. At that time, they have all kinds of briefings, and so in the email you get, you can actually use the, the links. They have, for example, Cal City's put out wildfire resources from federal, state, and local resources. There's a comprehensive link you can click on for that. So something that would help us in the future. And then they put in, like, a general description of the governor's proposed budget highlights for the budget the governor set for this year. And then they go into all of the different subject matter policy committee areas that relate to the budget, such as community services, and what the budget will have for that, and some of the times, the advocacy priorities, that they're going environmental quality. It's all listed there, several different subject matter areas. So I just wanted to give you that update as to what's happening in Sacramento regarding mostly the budget and the issues that are related in these, in these subject matter areas.
Thank you very much. Any comments? Do you have to open it?
I'm sorry.
All right, perfect. Anything else? All right, then we're going to go to closed session.
Hi, thank you. Have a good drive back to Maggieland.
Okay, we are live.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'll give my closed session report. The City Council recessed into closed session at 9:49 PM pursuant to the three items listed on the agenda. City Council reconvened into open session at 10:57 PM and no reportable action was taken.